Thank you all for being here. Do you want to get this?
Oh, yeah.
We will start our meeting as we typically do, our study sessions with citizen comments. So if you have come to speak about an item on the agenda, I have a couple of people signed up. And if when I call your name, you'd come to the podium, the microphone, adjust the microphone so it fits you, suits you, and we can hear you. And give us your name and spell your last name and give us your address. You may have three minutes after that we start. So our first speaker is Carol Matthews and Bob Brazel on deck.
I'm Carol Matthews, 3851 Hoyt Street, Treet Ridge. Proactive codes enforcement would restore confidence of Treet Ridge citizens. As I sat in the many, many meetings in the MRS committee members and the many, many meetings with citizens over the past year, everyone agreed upon one thing, and that was that city codes enforcement policies are ineffective. And it was probably the nicest description I heard. Most stories include many years of frustration with blighted properties in neighborhoods and inconsistency by law enforcement with dealing with them. Residents complained of city property with ill-kept weeds and trash. They said, "Treet Ridge seems to have a need to preserve blighted properties as a badge of tolerance, refusing to deal with overpopulated rentals, crime, and crime-ridden houses." Treet Ridge residents said they no longer felt safe in their homes with repeated break-ins and vandalism that seemed to be of little interest to law enforcement. Doorbell rings are a popular commodity in Treet Ridge neighborhoods, but it is not a deterrent for package theft, smashed car windows, and vandalism, even when perpetuates picture in the publish are published in the neighborhood Facebook. Our soft approach to codes enforcement is like a neon sign advertising that Treet Ridge is a friendly place for drug dealers, felons, and the slum lords thrive. We respect, with what respect do codes enforcement officers have from law-abiding citizens or non-law-abiding citizens when they write codes violations continuously and there is no consequences for repeated offenders? Our neighbors are vexed by blighted half-constructed building on a prime lot that has been under construction for seven years. The property has been under action by city without results. A duplex, as have been our populated, overpopulated continually cited codes violations for nearly 10 years, has been renovated, but the cycle of code violations is being perpetuated. Our story was repeated over and over again throughout the city. Each new neighborhood has the same story. The story needs to end. Take a new approach to codes enforcement in Treet Ridge. Respect the rights of law-abiding citizens and deal with non-law-abiding citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bob Brazel.
Yeah, Bob Brazel, 3830 Carr Street, Treet Ridge, Colorado. I came tonight to talk about Airbnbs, but I don't think that's so much on the agenda, after I looked at the agenda. But since we're talking about code enforcement, it is on the agenda. We do have a code in the city of Treet Ridge about bed and breakfasts. And Airbnbs violate that code, just about all of them. I have one across the street from me, and it violates the code. They have no off-street parking. We've had probably 15 to 17 different people in the last year come and go out of that, which is disturbing my single-family neighborhood. We're Zoned R2. And now, we've had the same people living in that house as renters with the owner there now for at least seven or eight weeks. So it's not an Airbnb now, it's an illegal rental. So I'm going to come to the city tomorrow, and I'm going to go to zoning, and I'm going to file a form of complaint to get this illegal rental stopped. It's R2, you have to have 100 square foot to have a duplex. This is 75-foot lot, frontage lot. I know what the zoning laws are. So I'm going to do that tomorrow, and then I'm going to come back to the council. If I don't get any results, you're going to hear about it. So, Mr. City Manager, pay attention. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the speakers that I have signed up to speak. Is there anyone here who hasn't signed up who would still like to speak at this time? All right, seeing none, we will close our citizens' comment portion of the agenda and move to Agenda Item Number One. This is Outside Agency Program Review Committee Recommendations. And Mary Ann Schilling, are you going to give us this report? If you would please introduce this. Thank you. Come forward with whoever you need to.
Hi. Tonight, we have Sunny Garcia and Madeline Devan, and they are going to be speaking on behalf of the Outside Agency Program Committee regarding the recommendations for the 2020 budget.
Thank you very much. Just push it so the green light is on. There you are.
Thank you, Mayor Starker, council members, city staff, and residents for this opportunity to speak tonight regarding the recommendations of the review committee for the outside agency program. Thank you for your support of community member involvement in the budget process and for believing in this unique opportunity for citizens of Treet Ridge to have a voice in the funding of organizations that directly impact the lives of the most vulnerable in our community. We would like to thank Mary Ann for organizing this schedule of presentations, keeping the committee informed, and all of us on track and on time. She was pleasant and professional and answered questions of committee members and organization representatives. We would also like to thank each of the other committee members for dedicating their time. We thank Cheryl Brungart, Christine Disney, Alejandra Major, Margie Robinson, Chris Schilling, and James Skinner for their thoughtful contributions to this process. As a committee, we all met weekly and listened to the presentations of each applicant organization, and then we thoroughly evaluated them on several criteria based on their applications as well as their presentations and information they provided us. We had an opportunity to ask questions of each organization in order to provide the best funding recommendations. Each organization requesting funds serves residents of Treet Ridge spanning all ages, abilities, backgrounds, and needs. Something we heard from all of the agencies was how the needs for the populations they serve have increased significantly this year for many reasons, among them, the rapid population growth and lack of affordable housing. We reviewed funding requests from 21 organizations serving Treet Ridge residents and working hard to meet the needs of vulnerable people so they can lead fulfilling lives and be contributing members of our community. These organizations assist families and children in need, support literacy and educational endeavors, provide for basic needs of food and housing, aid those with physical and mental illnesses, advocate for abused and neglected children, and are working to keep our area and city clean and thriving. The people in these organizations work hard with the limited resources that they have to fill gaps and help people and families achieve their goals of being self-sustaining. We wanted to be respectful of the budget and worked hard to stay at the same amount of giving as last year, so the awarded amounts reflect this difficult work and decisions. Thank you again for both supporting the work of this committee and our recommendations in order to serve the needs of our community.
Thank you. Okay, should we open it up for questions? Open it up for questions from councillor for Ms. Devan or Ms. Garcia? Ms. Hoppe.
Thank you for the committee for doing all this work and for seeing all these presentations and then being able to divide up the money as fairly as possible. One question I do have, though, is one of the questions that you guys ask or is part of the application process. Do we ask what percentage of our donation is their total budget? So if an agency is getting a donation and 90% of their total budget is what they get from us, or if it's a smaller amount, do we ask that?
We don't ask that specifically. Sometimes they offer up that information, but it's not something that's asked specifically, no.
Does our, to follow up on that, does our contribution or would our contribution, if the level's indicated, would that be a significant? I think you're asking whether it would be a significant portion of their annual funding or a substantial, significant, moderate, you know, piece size?
I would say that that very much varies for each one. I mean, some of them are smaller organizations, so we would cover their entire need, whereas some of them are huge and it's a very small percentage. So it just depends on which one.
Ms. Hoppe.
Yeah, just to follow up, the reason why I ask that question is because I wonder if some of the agencies need to look at diversifying their budget and their donations. And so I appreciate your recommendations, and I approve of the recommendations. I would ask that possibly consider asking that question and then weighing that evidence maybe potentially next year, because I feel like some of the programs, if we're their only funder, then I feel like that they probably should do a little bit more work to try to diversify that portfolio.
Thank you. Mr. Matthews.
Thank you. I have, in general, and so I'm going to preface this right now. When we start doling out money, I am a little concerned, and next year, we'll take a look at how the money, the entities that we donate money to, are they actually being successful? That's one thing that bothers me about we have no tracking of where the funds go and are they really being used effectively and efficiently? And also, how much of those funds are staying at Treet Ridge and how much are going out of Treet Ridge? There are times when we can afford to help others other than in Treet Ridge, but I think that should be some prime questions that get asked. I have some questions. One of my first ones about the ATAT team, the Active Transportation Team. They put down Bike to Work Day, Breakfast, and After Party. And I'm wondering, with all the need for dollars elsewhere that can improve people's lives, do we have to be paying for parties? And what was your thought with them? And what do they really contribute to the city of Treet Ridge?
Well, they do other programs. I think the Bike to Read, they do, they just bought a pedicab, which will do rides for, you know, citizens that maybe can't have access to a bicycle. They do other programming. So it wasn't all based on just that particular, you know, we look at the whole picture of what they're doing.
And, well, I was going to say more, but I'll stop there. I think we need to take a look at that. And I was, I had a question, too, about the library institute. And I love libraries, so don't get me wrong, but didn't they just get a tax increase this year?
That's kind of out of the scope of what we're looking at. We look specifically at what they're asking for, which is, again, how we base what we recommend on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Davis.
So, thank you guys for your work. Actually, these presentations would probably be fun to see. But, and I wanted, I wanted to thank you in particular because I do see, one of the things that always kind of caught my eye was to make sure that we're meeting people's basic needs. So I really like to see that, like, some of these folks, if it be Family Tree or Community Table, and those folks are getting a big lion's share of what they're asking for, because I think those kinds of things are basic needs. If you're in the backpack program, you know, feeding the kids and stuff. So thank you for that, because that's like the first thing I look at is, you know, are we meeting their needs? So thank you for that. And I did have this similar comment about the library, because I do know that they did just get funding. One, and then I know the Active Transportation Team, I know they also rehab bikes and stuff for kids and do other programs. So, you know, we're not giving them a lot, so I don't really see that being too drastic. I guess one of my other questions, and it kind, sometimes it implies this in here, and other times it doesn't, but just in general, do you all take into consideration how it affects, I know we asked the question of what the percentage of their budget, but I think the other question is, is the percentage of Treet Ridge citizen users? And I'm guessing you probably asked that, but I want to just double-check.
We do. We ask, that's a specific question, actually. So it's, you know, based on the money that we give, how many of Treet Ridge citizens are you serving? It can be in a percentage, but it's usually an actual number.
Okay, thank you. And thanks again for your work.
Ms. Pond.
Thank you. Thank you for the work of the committee. I also support it. I have a couple of questions. It looks like from the matrix that there's one new request that came in. Was there any others this year, just that one?
There was no new others besides that one.
And how, forgive me if I, if this is obvious, but we, how are we advertising it as we're looking for need? It's on the website, I'm sure, but...
Sure, it's on the website, social media, and then they reach out to past people that have applied from whatever means that they have, email, that type of thing.
Ms. Hoppe.
I'm done.
A question for staff. Do, so we reach out to past participants, but if someone were to send in an email request or a letter request throughout the year, are they on that list that get reached out to? Do they get told that information, like this is when you need to apply for these monies?
I have, I know on one or two occasions to different agencies. I couldn't tell you what agencies they were. But Mary Ann, do you have any more information on that? Or, we also have, we advertise in the paper also that the opportunity is available. It goes in the Gazette, goes in the connections, the website, social media. But anytime I get a request, I say there is this, council likes to do it at one time, so the application process is online.
Additional questions? Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you for all the hard work. I know it's not easy to receive the requests and have to sift through who gets what. And so I appreciate you doing the dirty work for us to kind of figure out where we should land on these. And to the point of the Jefferson County Library, this is for their foundation, not necessarily for the library itself, right?
Yeah, I thought of that after the fact. So the tax increase wouldn't necessarily, because this is the foundation wing, which is totally separate from the library itself.
Just wanted to say thank you for all your hard work. Appreciate it.
Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, again, want to echo gratitude for putting this together. And it's not necessarily directly about this, but just kind of to get it out in the public. The Outdoor Lab Foundation, we're giving them $17,400. And last year, we gave them $18,500. And unfortunately, Everett middle school students had to be brought home because there was an emergency. So a lot of them missed that opportunity. And they were supposed to go back for, I believe it was, two nights, three days. And because of the restrictions of the counselors, they were only able to go up for one full day. And so I've talked to, I've been approached by several Everett parents and have also talked to the Outdoor Lab Foundation about possibly sending those now seventh graders back up next year. And so I don't know if they'll be coming to council to help with that cost. I know that they were going to talk about doing some more fundraising, and we had kind of tossed out some ideas of that nature. But I do just want us to be cognizant of them potentially coming back to us for a bigger ask so that our students can have that really positive experience that has really become a rite of passage in Jefferson County.
And they did speak to us about that, but at the time, they didn't, they hadn't gone in front of everybody to even get an answer about what they were going to do. So we weren't even thinking about that.
Thank you. Mr. Pond.
Yeah, one of my points for asking the question about the communication as well as the new requests is because we have been doing this now for, I think, two or three years. And I think pretty regularly, we do get one that comes in late from the side. And we seem to be tripped up by that a little bit. And I think, you know, it's just worth noting that the community did a great job, and people were communicated to, and we, you know, and yes, someone may come back up after the fact and that we should be receptive to, if it fits and it works, make, you know, having it. I know we've, it's caused us some consternation in the last couple of years when some of these things have kind of snuck around the side. I just think, I just wanted to say that I'm, I think he has done a great job. And I think to Ms. Dozeman's point, we're going to get a, you know, there may still be some stuff, and we should be open to that.
Thank you. Additional questions? I just noticed as I was reading this, the grant request for the Jefferson County Library would be to purchase a Discovery Mini area for the children's area at the Treet Ridge Public Library. So it looks like all of those funds would be for a valuable constituency in our, in our community. So, thank you very much. Do we have further discussion or questions of the committee? Ms. Hoppe.
I would like to ask for consensus to accept the recommendations from the 2020 Outside Agency Program Committee.
Thank you. We have consensus on that. Thank you very much for your report. Please express our thanks to all of the members of the committee, and we'll look forward to this coming to council. Thank you very much. Okay, let's see. Our next, our next item of business is Agenda Item Number Two. This is the reappointment of our municipal judge, Judge Christopher Randall. Judge Randall, if you'd like to join us here. Thank you for coming tonight. Please press your button and make sure it's green, and we'll be ready to, ready to go, so whenever you're ready.
I'm ready. So I'm seeking reappointment. I've been here, I don't know, eight terms, I believe. I started in '02 and was a municipal judge in Aurora before I came here, for those that aren't familiar with me. I'm reappointed by ordinance, so that's, as you folks know, you probably voted Monday night, and then there's a revote. So I think it's a somewhat unusual circumstance that a municipal judge is reappointed that way, but that's how the city of Treet Ridge does it. Court's running well. We have a pretty good morale, low turnover, good group of people. I think the challenges for us have been legislative initiated by the state. So dealing with appointment of counsel, dealing with getting to people quickly, legislation that prevents collection of restitution for victims. You can't issue a warrant anymore for non-payment of restitution. Things we're working on, I would say, for the future, customer service-oriented type things like online bill pay. I think last year, year before last, we now take credit cards. We're looking at a collection agency. Some of the courts have had some success with using a collection agency since we have less teeth to be able to collect money. The court got the Action or the Annual Change Award year before last, so that was, the court was happy to receive that. I think there's been, the challenges, the whole city is seeing are challenges for court, like homelessness, opioid use, transients, aging population. Those are all challenges for us. A few years ago, city council approved a budget item for, to help poor people with sentencing issues, like evaluations, UAs, classes. That has been a success. That I, I thank you for doing that. That has helped sentencing poor people receiving services and what they need for their sentences. So, and that's got very trend-setting and pushing the bubble, I think, that you folks had approved that. So of course, I'll have in next year's budget more money for that, to be able to do that. But thanks for approving that in the first place a few years ago. Any questions that you have? This is kind of the high points for reappointment.
Mr. Matthews.
Thank you. This issue of legislation no longer permits the issuance of bench warrants for the rest of persons who fail to pay for loss and harm to victims. Is anyone anywhere working on some, some kind of a substitute for that? I mean, if I go throw a rock through my neighbor's window and just say, "To heck with you. Get convicted, what happens to me?"
Yeah, there's...
What's the consequence?
We have a lobby, a lobbyist called Dentons, who's assisting the municipal judges with legislation. Then there's a tight group of judges that work with the Colorado Municipal League to add, to ask them to change the legislation. But the workaround or the way to attack it here is to, one, we put people on payment plans so they can spread it out or they can have time to pay, especially if it's restitution. And really, that legislation applies to any money that's owed the court. It could be a fine. But I think where you, where the harm occurs is with restitution for victims. What you can do, if somebody's on a payment plan or they have a future date to pay and they don't, and then you personally serve them with a contempt citation, and then they don't come to court, you can issue a warrant. But one, you have to find them. Two, they have to show up for court to be, to go through the due process for the contempt citation. And then the city has to prove that they did not have the ability to pay. So you can, there's a process to get the money for victims, but it's slow and not easy.
Thank you. And I'm not blaming you for that one, by the way.
No, no, it's a shame.
Ms. Hoppe.
Thanks for coming tonight, Judge. On your list of 2019 priorities, they, I was super excited to see they go live with online payments along with all the other things on the priorities. But there is one that I didn't quite understand. You said, "Have administration and police department evaluate court." What would that...
Yeah, we had, I can't remember the name of the group that came in a month or two ago. It's called...
Judge, can you speak closer to the microphone, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. I think the name of it, and I've mentioned in there, it's like the Leadership Foundation. What they did is they came in and interviewed staff to see where we could improve. And one of their suggestions was to have our internal customers evaluate us. And so we're going to do something like that this year or next year.
Thank you. Additional questions? Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Judge, for being here. I had a question about the teen court, and you'd indicated other jurisdictions have implemented that, and what would that look like here?
You know, when I worked in Aurora, we had one in Aurora. The upside is they're successful, and the kids like them, they're, they've pled guilty, they come to court, and then they're sentenced by their peers. So the jury actually sentences them. And the sentences are limited to things like writing apology letters, classes, community service. They can't sentence them to a fine or jail, so the teen jury is limited to that. The downside of it, it would take one or two people to operate it. I'd say here, for this size city... I'd say here, for this size city, one full-time person, that's kind of the downside. And then you need a lawyer, a judge, to supervise it. You need, the administration and operation is somewhat bulky and time-consuming.
And as far as the pipeline for that, do we have a significant number of teens that would be participating in that, or is that, what's the volume in that?
Yeah, the way it works, you usually don't accept violent crimes. You're going to accept everything else, property crimes, curfew, possession of alcohol, marijuana, that type of thing. And then the city attorney reviews all the files and determines which cases are appropriate, and they get a deferred judgment. That's part of the deal. So if they're successful with the sentence, the charge is dismissed. Then new legislation says that for all dismissed juvenile cases, they're automatically expunged or sealed, in other words. So it's a limited number of cases the city attorney has to approve, and I think in Aurora, the judge had to okay it, not sure on that. But they were screened by the city attorney for being appropriate, like you wouldn't have repeat offenders. You wouldn't have offenders who have a lot of state cases. So it's kind of first or second time, lower-level juvenile charges.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Matthews?
Later on today, or tonight, we're going to talk about court enforcement strategies. Are you going to be here to participate in that discussion in any way?
You know, I can't speak to whether it's good or bad, but what I can speak to is how it impacts the court.
And that's what I'm interested in.
Yeah, the administrative impact, the financial impact, that type of thing. Yes.
Okay. Just, well, I'll wait until we get to that issue, because then if you're going to be here, then I can
Okay.
I don't have to ask now.
Okay, additional questions? Ms. Weaver?
Thank you, Judge, for being here tonight. I was, this is a big question, but I'm just kind of curious regarding the opioid issue that you brought up. Are there things that we can be doing from the bench locally in a small city like this that can respond to the sort of massive things I keep, you know, articles I've been reading and all of these things? I'm just curious, since you're really seeing, feels like the primary face of it.
Yeah, you can deal it on a case-by-case, person-by-person. It's about the only way to address it. And that's where that fund that we have, the, I think it's called the Municipal Court Fund, that helps with evaluation treatment, UAs, that type of thing.
Thank you.
Yeah, but globally, court doesn't have a lot of power jurisdiction over big issues. It's more per person, individualized per person.
Judge, can you, can you speak to what, has there been an increase in homelessness or homeless individuals that are showing up in your, in your court? And do you have any good suggestions for us?
Well, I don't think it's, well, I think with the passage, the legalization of recreational marijuana, that didn't help. I don't know that it blossomed and ran away, but because we have a lot of streams, parks, trails, I think Wheat Ridge is kind of ripe for that kind of thing. As far as addressing it, I usually ask them, what's your one or two big issues you'd like to see resolved? And for a lot of them, it's either mental health issues, or drug issues, or both. A lot of times, it's something simple, like they just need to get their ID, they've had their backpack stolen, I know they get an ID, they need their social security card. Some of them come in and they have terrible medical or dental issues, so probation's been able sometimes to steer them towards doctors or dentists. I think it's individual for that person. But again, with a lot of them, they, they, I think they speak a good, they talk a good game in court, but they don't follow through. I think a lot of times, it's a mental health issue. So I can sentence anybody to anything, that doesn't mean they'll do it. So you can sentence people to something that's beneficial for them, and they still will not do it.
And we, do we have those resources within our community that if someone were to avail themselves, or that they might be able to find successful treatment and move out of their current conditions?
Yes. Yeah, the probation officer's been here a long time, and excellent with resources.
Thank you. Ms. Dozeman?
So I just wanted to commend you, and you got a nice compliment when those gentlemen came and conducted their Freedom Audit. They, so that you were very fair, and that you give good judgment. So I think that that really speaks to your character and your demeanor, and I just wanted to give you a little bit of kudos for that.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Matthews?
Yeah, I still want to get back to the homeless issue again, because, I mean, we see an awful lot of terrifying pictures on TV about the East, the West Coast especially. From your perspective, do you have any suggestions on how to try and avert a real crisis here in our city? I don't know where we're even at as far as being in a crisis or not. I know we're, I'm getting a lot of complaints, because I'm in District Four, so I get, you know, I got a lot of the green belt. And do you and the police, and I know you have to keep a judicial, you know, distance from things, but do you and the police strategize together at all on how to try and find solutions for these issues?
Again, I think it's on a case-by-case basis. Sometimes they'll have input for a particular person. I know we don't get together and look at some kind of macro system or overall society solution. I think it's more, what's helpful from the police department perspective is a thorough police report. So a lot of times, they'll even mention that this person, the issue could be alcohol, because they find them with beer cans all over the place, or some, they're drunk when they, when they encounter them. A lot of times, someone will just say, "I went to Denny's and dined in dash because I was hungry." So then we talk to them about going to Jeffco Action Center, getting vouchers from churches, that type of thing. Again, I think for court, it's more one-on-one and individualized, and not so much looking at the big picture, because a court is, is really not about that. But working with the police department, yeah, I think to the extent that we can, we do. I think too, you know, another way, another, another thing that I've talked to the police about, if you, if a crime has occurred, if they have probable cause to issue a summons, usually it's going to be possession of alcohol, camping, fires, trespassing, dining in dash, disorderly conduct, that type of thing, that they write that ticket, because that way, the court has more power to tell them to do stuff than the police. So I have the hammer of, they can be jailed if they don't comply. I like to avoid that with that group of society, but I think I've got more of leverage over them than just a policeman saying, "Would you please do this and that and the other thing?"
Thank you. I'd like to say that the judge invited me to come to one of his, I think it's a monthly staff meeting that you have with, with all of the staff in the court chambers, and we discussed sort of what, what this body does and what I do for the city, and they explained what they did, and it seemed like he had a very competent staff and conducted a very, a very organized and thoughtful meeting. So I wanted to thank you for that, Judge.
Yeah, thanks.
Any, any further questions for the judge? We are looking for a recommendation to move forward with this contract.
Yeah, this is, as a, as the judge mentioned, this by-city charter requires that an ordinance be adopted by city council, so the second reading and public hearing is scheduled for Monday, when that will be considered.
Mr. Urban?
I'll make a consensus that we approve that appointment.
Is there consensus around the table for that?
Again, again, the ordinance, that'll happen, have to happen through the ordinance.
Consensus to bring this ordinance to council.
Let me back up. A consensus to bring an ordinance forward recommending the approval of the appointment.
Okay.
Okay, do we have consensus to bring ordinance forward? We do. Judge, thank you very much for being here.
Thanks.
We'll see how the council decides to vote on that when it comes to the ordinance. All right?
See you Monday.
Thank you so much.
Was that a unanimous consent?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Our next order of business is Agenda Item Number Three. We have
I'll start it. Yep.
Good.
I'll start it, yep.
Good.
Thank you, Mayor.
Phil, Mr. Goff?
Yes, Item Number Three is Extended Stay Lodging Regulations.
If the judge is going to stay for that, for the code enforcement item, I'm wondering if we could move that up.
At the pleasure of the council, there's been a request that the judge would stay for the code enforcement item. Do we have consensus to move that up in the calendar? Okay, let's, let's then move to Item Number Five, and we'll postpone extended stay lodging. So Item Number Five, I think, Mr. Dahl, you, are you presenting on this one?
I am.
And whenever you're ready, please begin.
Counsel, you have a memorandum dated June 17 from Patrick through the chief, along with a memo to the whole council from myself and Nina Williams in my office, dealing with code enforcement strategies generally, and comparing half a dozen or so of the key enforcement or code enforcement tools the city presently uses with the similar tools in other cities, and how other cities approach the same issues. It may be that the, the way to proceed here, unless you have sort of general thoughts, is to look at the topics, and you see the comparison and the contrast. In some cases, other cities largely do a lot of what City of Wheat Ridge does, but there are some differences. And it's always worthwhile, I think, to look at how other people are dealing with the same issue. And there are some specific recommendations, as you see going through, including some specific language changes to the administrative citation process, which has been at the city now for maybe 10 years, and I think has been really a successful program that has diverted a number of enforcement calls into a system that's a lot more efficient. So it's the pleasure of the council, we can take these topics up. I can identify briefly for you what we do and what other cities are doing, and get some direction. Is that a way of proceeding?
Sounds good.
Objections to that? No objections? Fair enough. Well, let's start with everyone's favorite, inoperable vehicles. As you see, Wheat Ridge is fairly brief, allows one operative, non-operative vehicle outside in a residential district if it's covered. And so the cover means, you know, sort of, you know, you can buy these, these fabric covers for, for cars, but it sort of stops there. You see what other people do. And this one's pretty easy to determine how to turn up the stringency of enforcement, because you can do a couple of things. You can say, "No inoperable vehicles outside." You see that the, there is at least one other, there are plenty of other cities that do that and say, "Can't be inoperable outside for more than 72 hours." Some say you can have one, but inside a garage. Can't be in the street or the driveway. The definition of inoperable vehicles had to do for other cities, and the chief may want to comment on this, and often you'll look at whether there's a valid license plate, is probably the easiest. Let's remember that every code enforcement tool you choose to do has a administrative and enforcement sort of implementation cost. There's a staff cost, a time cost involved in implementing these, and sort of what you try to do is find tools that you can implement efficiently from a code enforcement standpoint. You don't want, for example, to take four hours of an officer's time in a day to write up, to investigate and write up one inoperable vehicle, because to me, that sounds inefficient. You want to be able to find a tool that gets you to that vehicle, you know, faster. It's a little trickier to determine if you're not using license plates, you know, how to determine something's inoperable, it takes longer. What I'd suggest for our discussion here, I just wanted to sort of alert you to what I think is an issue that we always have to keep in mind, which is, we want to use this enforcement tool, you have to look at the cost of enforcing, using an enforcement tool, and how efficient to make it. If council were to say, change the rules on inoperable vehicles, that's fine, give us that direction. What we'll do is figure out the best way to, to determine that something's inoperable. You know, I see that as kind of a, at an implementation level, and we'll try to find the best way, the cheapest way to determine that. But the main divide here is, I think, is the car outside uncovered, or is it not outside at all? And that's kind of a straight-up policy question for you. And of course, what you will get, because I've seen this in all the cities I've represented over many years, is the guy who says, "Well, I'm working on it. I'm working on that car." And sometimes, that's really true, and legitimate. And, you know, it needs the transmission replaced. By gosh, I'm a blue-collar worker, I don't have the money to pay for car repairs, but I can do it myself. And I, I need to be able to do that. That's, that's my income level dictates that, and so why shouldn't I be able to fix my own car on my own property? And at the moment, though, it's inoperable, and so, so there's that. I suppose you can have a timeframe, you could say, "Not outside for this amount of time." And, and if it's still out there, that means you haven't gotten the transmission in after two months, well, too bad. It does mean that we got to keep track of how long that's been there, for two months, and, you know, that's an administrative cost, too. Probably to position the discussion, it's, what you've got now is one outside if it's covered. Do you want to do more than that, and if so, respond to some of the suggestions I've made?
Ms. Hoppe?
Thank you for your work on this.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, one, I have a quick question before I, before I tell you what I wrote down. Is an apartment complex parking lot considered private property and a conditioned surface?
It's private property.
And if it's like a driveway, or if it's crushed gravel, or asphalt, is that considered a conditioned surface for parking a vehicle? So then my suggestion is that we say we allow one non-operative vehicle outside in residential district if covered, stored on private property on a conditioned surface. So that would avoid street parking of a non-operable vehicle, and it would avoid someone maybe just pulling it up to the, like, side of their house on maybe what's just kind of a weed patch, but if it would have to be a conditioned surface. And conditioned surfaces help when, if there's fluids leaking out of the vehicle or things like that. So that's, that was why I kind of came to that conclusion when I looked at this particular one.
So one of the challenges with, with the inoperable vehicles, in my experience, has been that, you know, you have people who like to work on cars as a hobby, right? So, so they, you know, they have their car, they, you know, they comply, they have it in their garage, or they have it on a concrete pad or crushed gravel pad. One of the challenges that we sometimes face is with inoperable vehicles that are torn into, you know, they've pulled the engine, pulled transmission, the driveway's right out in front where people see it, and it becomes a real eyesore. So you've got this, you know, sort of continuum in terms of what it looks like to have an inoperable, inoperable vehicle. People that keep a tarp over it, they're, you know, they're working on it, that's their hobby, it's in the garage or in the driveway, and it's sort of out of sight. And then those that might have it in a really visible location, and, and, you know, the hood's up on it, the engine's been pulled out, the engine block might be sitting there, you know, and it just creates more of an eyesore in the neighborhood. So, you know, that, that is sort of the continuum that we run into on a, on a, on a rather frequent basis in different areas of the city.
Well, and chief, also, I think what Ms. Hoppe just said, I think our code already requires that, right? It has to be on unapproved surface, doesn't it?
Right.
So I think what you recommended is not changing anything in the code, I believe.
Well, it doesn't read that it has to be on a conditioned surface right here, and what it says is allows one non-operative vehicle outside in residential district if covered. So it doesn't say that it can't be in the street, and it doesn't say that it has to
Our code, our, we do have another section of the code that talks about how vehicles, you know, need to be stored, and they have to be stored either on concrete or asphalt or conditioned service, some sort of crushed gravel. So it's covered in a different part of the code, but, but we use that quite frequently. I think council
I think council adopted that ordinance three, four years ago, in terms where a vehicle can be stored. And we did a lot of education around that as well, because we had a number of older residences where people were just parking on dirt. Their driveway was, was just a dirt driveway.
So I guess if that's no change, then that is my suggestion, that there's no change. And here's my concern, is, and kind of like what Mr. Dahl brought up, is if you can't afford to take your vehicle to a mechanic, and you have to work on it, or you have to wait until a friend who has the skills has the time to work on it, when, then, and sometimes it takes a while. And when I was a single mom, I was riding the bus with a car seat for two months, because I couldn't afford to fix my car. So, and I lived in an apartment complex. And so, if we change it to, "No inoperable vehicles can be stored outside," well, I didn't have a garage. So, you know, now, now you get to the pile-on situation. And so, that's why I just want to make sure that we're in a situation where, no, we don't want to look at your torn-up car on your driveway, but we also want to give people the opportunity to try to find a place to succeed in life, too.
Mr. Matthews?
I'm, I'd like Mr. Dahl to elucidate a little bit on the difference between inoperable and unlicensed, because, and I sort of agree with Ms. Hoppe that, you know, there's issues there that we need to take into consideration. So, and then, A, if I'm understanding laws right, for something like this, code enforcement's officers can be told to get off the property, how do they determine if a vehicle's really inoperable, if it's been sitting there for 10 or 20 days? But if it's, the car is unlicensed, now I've got one car, I'm thinking about it, where they just backed in, so no one can see their license plate, so we don't know if it's currently licensed or not, but could you kind of, the two of you maybe talk about the difference between actually checking to make sure it does not run somehow versus being unlicensed?
It's a lot easier to determine licensure than, "Is it running?" Because if, you don't know if it's, I don't know if my car sometimes is going to start until I get in it, you know? It's an old car. But you can tell from the outside whether my car's got a current license, you can run that plate. So the, now, nobody's saying anything bad about my, my old car, because I'm, you know, you know how I feel about that car. The chief, I think, wants to add, but I would say that if you want to draw the line at adding to, to, or to the definition of non-operable, or a way of determining it, licensure, that's pretty efficient, it's, it's quick, it's something I think that we can do, and it addresses the concern that, you know, has been raised.
Chief?
Right, so it's always important to keep in mind that I can own a vehicle, park it in my car or my driveway, and not have it licensed. It's not a requirement by the state that a vehicle that is on private property is in my driveway be licensed and registered. Now, if I drive it out on the roadway, that's, or it's parked on the street, that, that requires that vehicle to be licensed and registered. In, in some areas, like an apartment com, parking lot complex, you know, it might be easier for us to determine if a vehicle is licensed or properly registered, but taking enforcement action, you know, against it on private property is, is not something that, that we can do. We can't enforce traffic laws. Traffic laws include licensing and registration, you know, on private property.
Well, then, how, currently, how do we determine if a vehicle's inoperative?
Well, so we're trained investigators, right? You know, if we get a complaint, we, you know, we'll talk to a reporting party, we'll get the history in regards to what's going on, we'll walk up to the vehicle, if the hood's up and the engine's missing, you know, it, you know, it's one plus one equals two kind of thing, right? If the vehicle looks intact, I mean, we'll contact, you know, the registered owner, we'll have a discussion. And generally speaking, you know, 99% of the people that we run across are going to cooperate with us, they're going to tell us if it's, if it's operating. I mean, we can look at it, if it's not registered, you know, that, that might be a clue, and we have a discussion, and, and, you know, try to get answers to those questions so we can, so we can move forth. You know, that, that's, that's the way, that's, that's done 90% of the time, right?
Ms. Weaver?
I agree with what Ms. Hoppe was saying. I would just say that not more than one is important to me. Also, just to sort of verify the problematic nature of licensing, I have several vehicles at the farm that are licensed, that never go off the farm, and they're all operable. Or at least for me.
Does, I had a question about, do we have issues with covering a vehicle? I mean, do they, I suppose covers come in all different flavors?
Right, they do. So we don't want to, you know, the Harbor Freight blue tarp covering a vehicle, right? So the code, and Phil or the city attorney, or Jim can correct me, I think our code is, gives some direction in regards to what that tarp needs to look like, we make recommendations to people. I mean, we want it to be a vehicle tarp, want it to be securely snug around the vehicle, we don't want it to be an eyesore, you know, in the neighborhood, so.
Would you, would you incorporate the, you know, the transmission, or the, or the other parts that are, that are out, if it's under, if it's sort of under construction, if you will? I mean, would it, would you extend your covering to cover the components on a car?
Right, so there are other parts of the code that deal with tools and parts and those kinds of things that we'll be talking about later in terms of outside storage, you know, that would be, wouldn't be considered necessarily part of the vehicle if they're out laying on the concrete or the lawn.
Okay. Additional, and I, Mr. Dahl, we're looking for sort of direction on each, each and every one.
Ideally, ideally, within the limits of your patience, the amount of time you want to devote, yes. Partly, sometimes my job is to, at a certain point in the discussion, say, "Here's what I'm hearing," and tell you what, get you to say if you think I'm hearing right, and so we move on to the next thing.
Why don't we go there?
Okay. I, I think what I'm hearing is that the, the council's not wanting to go to the point of requiring vehicles, inoperable vehicles to be stored inside, and that wants to allow for some activity in repair, et cetera, outside, especially where you've got apartment units that don't have garages. So what I would expect that we would do here would be to, to try to be as specific as we can about the indicia of non-operability that would be available to the police department to be able to determine if some, if a vehicle's not operative. And also to, I'll, I'll take a look at how we talk about the cover, because I really do think that's an issue for a lot of neighbors. It isn't that the, there's a car next door that's uncovered, we've got a lot of RVs in town that are covered with RV covers that are designed for that purpose, and we can take a harder look at, at the cover itself, understanding that still means there'll be a car there. But I, I hear the council's not wanting to go the next step, which is really prohibit, or it's got to be inside, which is understandable. And in terms of the other car parts, et cetera, I think those might properly be talked about in the next couple items, if that's all right.
Not in the street, right?
Not in the street.
Okay. Does that, does that capture, we have consensus on that? Or we can just?
I'll make a consensus relative to what the city attorney said for our inoperable vehicle code.
Okay. Does that sound all right? Good.
Thank you. Outside storage, you see the definition of the prohibition of the storage of junk, you see the definition that's in the code right now. Also, the second bullet's unlawful to store goods that can be allowed, viewed by the general public, that are not, which are of a kind not commonly associated with the zoning classification or permitted use of the property. Then you see what some others have done, and there are a couple of things that I do think are helpful, and, and again, before we get your comments, I like the chief's. But I, I like the, it's the sofa out front. You know, you just, that's something I think you really know, that it's in the wrong place, and I liked that language, and I think we could, we could profitably use that, that first bullet. And, and the third bullet sort of repeats that in a different way, as you see, the things that can't be stored outside, furniture, mattresses, household appliances, these are things that belong inside to begin with, and shouldn't be outside. So, you know, one approach might be to kind of tune up our definition of unlawful storage to include these things that are clearly inside the house kinds of things, make it a little easier to point to them and say, "We don't care if they're in wonderful condition, they're outside." Chief, what do you think about that?
Thanks, Mr. Dahl. So, in, in discussing this with, with my staff, we thought that there were some things that we could add to the definition. Certainly, you know, furniture would, would strengthen that a little bit, mattresses added, talk about car parts specifically, we talk about machinery in the current ordinance, you know, and add that piece, salvage materials, you know, you know, construction materials, you know, I mean, if you have somebody that has work going on on their property, you're going to see some construction materials, maybe word that in terms of being, you know, prolonged storage of, of construction materials. Those were things that we all thought would, would just add to, to what we describe currently as, as junk in our definition, and strengthen that a little bit.
Question, Ms. Davis?
So, I have a question, and it kind of goes back to the unlawful, and it talks the storage of items, and I know we put like car parts or car, you know, car, it's, it almost sounded like you were out there working on your car or something. I guess what I've heard or seen is that some folks suddenly run their business out of their house. So there's a lot of, you know, and it kind of goes back to your comment about equipment, or like they'll have a dumpster by their house, and because they're construction or whatever, they'll kind of continually use that dumpster for their business needs, or have 16 ladders out by the side of their house, and, you know, so I guess my question or my request would be, I'd like, and I don't know how to word this, but I'd almost like some wording in there, because it's about storage, and it's outside, is outside storage of, you know, possible business activity type of items. I don't, I don't even know how to word it, but.
I think, I think, Ms. Davis, I think we do have that covered in part of the code.
So, the, the code, and Lauren might help me with this, or Phil or Jim, as it, as it speaks to, you know, businesses and homes, does restrict, you know, the number of vehicles and types of activities. We're, we've dealt recently with, with a party who has a lawn, not a lawn, a tree-cutting service, and, and has, has left equipment and trailers and those kinds of things, so. So it is, is currently addressed, we could certainly look at that and say, "Do we need to tighten that up? Do we need to strengthen that a little bit to, to make it more, more effective and efficient?"
Yeah, I guess that would be my question, because I can think of the several times that I've been called, and a lot of it is that there's excessive just stuff at the house. So, yeah, okay, so they've, now, they, you know, this side of the house doesn't have grass anymore, it has gravel, so there's two work trailers, or even recreation trailers, and then another trailer full of a bunch of, you know, our, you know, three-wheelers, or, you know, that it, it almost looks like, I mean, it's not appropriate for the neighborhood. So, I just wonder if that's something we can look at, because, I mean, I'm not saying it's one RV, it's, you know, a lot of trailers and that type of thing.
So not just associate it with a home business necessarily, but just a lot of toys, maybe, and trailers, and?
So we do have, we do have an ordinance that restricts the number of recreational vehicles, boats, campers, trailers, to, to two, can't have any more than that, so there's an existing ordinance in, in line with that. Where I've seen the issue in terms of service requests, have been around the home businesses, where they're, they're literally operating the business out of their house, and it's a business that, you know, has a construction component to it, you know, and a labor component to it. So, it's too many vehicles parked on, on neighbor streets, and in this recent case, a lot of equipment, you know, trailers, and, you know, we had resolved that issue, got them to clean it up, and a few months later, they were back doing the same thing again.
Yeah, I would say the two that I'm thinking about are both. One's more of a work, and a construction kind of business type of thing, and the other one, I'm not sure if it's work and recreation, but it's, you know, big old trailers and that type of thing.
Well, what we, what we can certainly do is look at, and being more specific about the storage of commercial equipment and supplies in residential zone districts, whether it's a commercial equipment or supplies that are associated with a permitted home business. We have some home occupations, that's great, but the storage of that outdoor, or the outdoor storage of that, I think we can, we can draw a line there.
Okay.
Chief, as mentioned, we do have, it may be just a matter of, of enforcement on the number of recreational vehicles and trailers, and I think I remember, I forget when, the council imposed that number of two, it was probably at least 10 years ago, but I remember it happening.
And that was, that would be on private property and on the, on the public right-of-way adjacent there, too?
Yeah, it's, it's at the residence, so.
Okay.
It's parked.
Ms. Weaver?
I would, first of all, I'd like to thank the City of Wheat Ridge, because in the last 10 years of owning the farm, they've been very lenient, and, and code enforcement has actually worked with me quite a bit, because, as you all know, I bought a farm, and I'm on dumpster number 20, I think, this year. So, and the farm is a business occupation at the same time, and so, so I think that there are some instances, and I think Wheat Ridge has been really great about this, in, in working with the person, so I would, I would ask for the continued openness that they've had around this, because while there are some businesses that are okay, or home occupation, I think it can be problematic when, you know, so, so what if you cannot see it from the street? But it's something, and, and I'm, I'm going to use my example so, so that we can have this conversation, because, you know, as you know, I'm a conservation easement, I'm, I'm doing agricultural stuff, I have stuff out, I have tried over the last 10 years to get that in. I've also gotten code enforcement violations for an unpainted barn, because I had, I had paint chipping off what was a 100-year-old barn. And, and that took time to sort of remediate over 10 years, and I think it's improved, and there's a lot of stuff that's left the property and is inside a barn. But I do want to just sort of, like the car issue that we were just talking about, I think that there are other citizens in Wheat Ridge that may need time, they may need time to get money together, to get the dumpster, I know we have a program for her sort of helping with remove ju, removing junk, are we still doing that? So, so in, just having a little bit of leniency, as the city has, I think, in the past around some of these things, I think is really appreciated and helpful, because there will be, there are lots of outliers, like my place in Wheat Ridge.
And I'm going to go to Mr. Matthews, but I did want to, I wanted to ask you, is your property zoned A1?
No.
No, it's, so it's a residential? Okay, thank you.
I will clarify, it's zoned residential, but I am considered agricultural by the county because of the easement, but I am held to residential zoning, so that's, and so, in there, right, is that, is that gray area.
Yeah, the gray area, but, but maybe you're looking at context.
Exactly, and I just wanted to say, I have very much appreciated how Wheat Ridge PD has always brought that context in, and all of their officers have been really fantastic about, about problem-solving with the code.
I'm going to go to Mr. Matthews, and then Ms. Dozeman.
Yeah, and you exposed the question I was about to ask, is having different zoning issues, and of course, in District 4, I've got a lot of agricultural zone property yet. I mean, that guy might have four or five vehicles parked outside, and he may still plant a few crops or have horse property. It may necessitate that he's got a small tractor, you know, that, how does all this fall into, can we, you know, we almost have to do this zone by zone a little bit, don't we?
No, we really don't. You know, the code enforcement things that we're talking about in Chapter 15, for the most part, aren't specific to zone districts, they're basic expectations. So, I can have multiple vehicles on my property. I can have my tractors, you know, I can have my truck, I can have my car, I can have my motorcycle, as long as they're operable or they're stored, it's, it's not an issue. You know, so the specific codes we're talking about, for the most part, don't, don't really specifically, you know, apply to whether I'm an ag or a, you know, an R1. Now, there are some considerations for, you know, grasses and those kinds of things and a conversation easement that we have to take into consideration. There are some exceptions based on the size of a lot and those kinds of things, but, you know, they're not, it's not a, I would strongly suggest to council not to try to peel these off based on, "It's agricultural, it's rural." You know, we have an ordinance that says, you know, you know, it talks about the condition of a property, it says, you know, you've got to have gutters, you know, you've got to have screens, you can't have peeling paint, those kinds of things. And to Councilmember Weaver's point, you know, we'll, when we have violations, we will issue a warning, and then based on the scope of the problem, and the nature of the problem, if we have somebody who is compliant and willing to work with us, we'll do that. The difficulty we oftentimes get into, and I think, you know, the crux of some of the issues we run into are the people that aren't compliant, right? And we're out there, one, two, three, half a dozen, a dozen or more times, but my recommendation to council wouldn't be to peel this off and look at making different requirements for different kinds of zoning districts, because I think, I think what we have right now really addresses all of it, it's plain and it's simple, applies across the board.
Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you. So, I have a couple specific questions, but I just want to express some of my thoughts that I've, that I've had reading through this and kind of working through this, is I feel like I know the intent behind this, and that it's to set a higher standard for property maintenance, and to allow code enforcement to have more teeth for those reoccurring problematic properties, I understand that. But I also feel that some of this is marginalizing an already marginalized population. So, we already know that this, these tend to happen in rental properties, low-income properties, and we've kind of spoke to those issues of people not being able to afford taking care of their property, and I appreciate and respect that you work with them, and I know that. It's just, it's really hard for me to keep piling it on and creating more punishment, basically, and so that's just kind of my overarching view of this. And then, as far as this specifically, I had a question about like a permanent building. Would you consider a carport that has open sides, a permanent building, or are you allowed to store in that area?
Doesn't it depend on the carport? I think I've had this happen before, that it has to be like a built carport, not a...
I'm going to ask a member of my staff to come up and answer that question, so Jim or Phil.
You have to come up.
You can either go to the podium or the...
Here, you can share my mic, I'm sure we'll have more questions for you. Don't be shy.
Philip Schrader, CSO supervisor. What you have to understand is, is if it's seen from public view or surrounding properties, that's what we deal with, that's, the majority of our complaints come from neighbors who are tired of looking at whatever they're looking at. And when we go out and our officers go out and we ask some questions and consider everything that's involved, what we're hearing from this party versus what this party is telling us, we have to look at the facts, and the facts are, if there's a named complainant and they have a serious concern about public nuisance, they have a right to make a complaint. Now, you have a right to have your private property, but if there's nuisance items that are not allowed per the Code of Laws, being stored outside in a residential property and are exposed to public view from your surrounding properties, it's an issue, and you have to put it inside of a permanent structure, four walls and a roof. An open-air carport is not a permanent structure. It does not preclude someone from staring at a dozen couches, styrofoam boxes, everything and anything, you name it, they store it outside. A lot of cases, it's another party moving into the house and bringing their stuff that doesn't fit inside the house, so it's an overflow situation. So, we look at it from the perspective, is it in public view? Not only from the public right-of-way, but from the surrounding properties. And we have an obligation to go and investigate those complaints and suggest the corrections to be made.
Thank you.
So, that kind of touched on one of my other questions, which was, the general public could be a neighbor looking into your backyard and seeing these materials and it being an issue?
Yes.
Ms. Hoppy?
So, a question is, it says here, right at the very end, it says, "But which are kind not commonly associated with the zoning classification or permitted use of the property?" So, my question would be, if, if it's in a commercial area, and let's say it's a landscaping company, then their permitted use of that property as a landscaping company probably has its own set of rules of how much rock, or mulch, or equipment you can store on that property, is that true?
Yes.
Okay, so it, so it wouldn't necessarily, so, you know, changing things like tools, equipment, and supplies utilized for automotive repair, construction, or let's say landscaping, if it's a permitted use of the property, then, then adding that language would not change that for that particular...
Not for that specific...
Okay, so then, and then my other question on this one was, that I had, notes that I had was, you know, that said, you know, construction materials can't be stored outside, and you address that by saying prolonged construction materials, because again, if somebody's having a project done, then sometimes they'll have it all dropped at once and then work on it, so...
And that's usually associated with, if they have a legal building permit?
A permit, mhm. So, so for me, where we're at with outside storage, I support changing, changing it to read kind of how the chief had said, where, you know, upholstered indoor furniture, household appliances, some of the other things that his staff had recommended, adding the word to prolonged construction material, I support adding those to, to that code.
So, this, these would be the three items in the bullet point, other local codes, item intended for indoor use, the tools, equipment, and items not to be stored outside?
Except that we've already adjusted inoperable vehicles in another place.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, I guess wouldn't, as, I guess one of my requests was to also highlight if it was, is like business equipment, if...
Commercial equipment.
Yeah, commercial equipment. Okay, permitted, okay.
Yeah, I think you do, you do have some ability where we already talked about not commonly associated with zoning classification.
So, are we going to do something about the, about the home-based businesses that have the equipment, I think is what Christie's asking about? How does that, where does that fall?
My take, I'm curious what the chief and the CSO feel about this, but a home-based business...
Get to me, you've got to get into the microphone.
A home-based business is a zoning classification, or it's a, it's a use entitlement that carries with it its own expectations, and those expectations are clearly not that you store your inventory outdoors. So, the fact that it's a commercial activity in a residential zone district doesn't mean that now all the commercial standards apply as if it were a tire store. You know, it's still a home-based business, and you'd still, I think, have the ability to say, "No storing all that inventory outdoors," is inconsistent with the entitlement you have, which is a home-based business entitlement.
Ms. Hoppy, but did you have a, did you have a reply on that, or I can go to Ms. Hoppy?
Can you rephrase that real quickly?
Well, I think that what we were asking is, the home-based businesses, like where does their, like, commercial supplies and equipment fall? And then, what Mr. Dahl had just said brought a question to mind, to, an example that Christie had said, which was, you know, several ladders stored outside. So, I would think if you were, let's say, a painter, probably the only thing that you do have is several ladders that you, and some of those tall ones you can't necessarily store inside, so would there be something, like where do they fall, and could screening be something that would have to be applied, or something like that? So, if they were storing something outside, like their...
We obviously see a lot of screening action taking place. Ideally, we want something permanent. A lot of times, a screening situation is a tarp of some kind that just creates an attraction to whatever's stored behind it, so we always tell people, you know, "Don't screen, put it inside of a permanent structure." It's the discretion of the officer, once there's code violations there, what is reasonable under the code? Everybody has ladders, right? You can have two or three, because maybe you're working on both sides of the house at the same time, or pruning the apple trees in the back. Two or three might be, might be okay, that's reasonable. 10 or 12? Why do you need 10 or 12? That suggests maybe more of a business storage. So, again, we leave it up to the discretion of the officers, what is reasonable in your mind, and can you articulate what may or may not be going on per what you're seeing?
Who can address the code? Address this home occupancies. Who can address it? Lauren? Thank you.
So, the zone, home-based businesses has its own section in the zoning code, and it explicitly prohibits outside storage of any material associated with that business.
They're allowed one vehicle, though.
One vehicle.
But can't have a lot of them, probably.
Nope. Number nine, "There shall be no exterior storage on the premise of material product or equipment used as part of the home occupation, nor shall there be any visible evidence from any property line of the operation of a home occupation, except for the sale of plants and produce grown on the premise."
Okay, Ms. Hoppy?
I mean, so when somebody gets their license for their home-based business, then that's information that they have anyway, so they, they know that they can't store all their stuff outside, and that it has to be stored indoors?
Yes.
For the purpose of moving to number three in the list of nine items that we're going to cover, and I'm happy to stay as long as you want, but I'm trying to allocate your time effectively, what, what I think I've heard is that the, there's support for adding some specific descriptive items of things that, like furniture, mattresses, things that are indoor items, no matter what zone district you're in, that ought to be inside, to a structure that we already have in various places in the code. We have a home-based business structure, as Lauren just mentioned, we have a number of recreational vehicles and trailers structure from 2004. The, we've got the addition of the three bullets or versions of them that are shown here as from other codes, understanding inoperable vehicles otherwise addressed. If we sort of package that, is that a start for us? Understanding, in the end, you will see an ordinance, and you'll have that opportunity, there's always a continuum between trying to wordsmith it here and wordsmith it later, and we do a little of both, to be very honest, but I try to...
I'd like to make a consensus to move forward with the outdoor storage recommendations that the city attorneys provided.
Okay, we have consensus on that, yeah. Mr. Dahl, please continue with number three.
Number three, on refuse and rubbish, we've got a seven-day rule. You see what other people have, or other cities have said, I'm not sure, even though it's longer, that it's better, when I look at it, and maybe the chief or others can articulate, maybe you can, Phil, the, whether, whether there's a better way for us to articulate trash and garbage. Now, we're not talking about storing sort of legitimate things, we just talked about that, but now these are the illegitimate things, and I'm not sure that, that what's, that there is more to be added, but, but maybe others feel differently.
So, when you, when you think about your trash or garbage, you know, you generally, you know, have a contract service that comes by and picks it up within seven days? I think that that is sort of the rationale behind, you know, this, you accumulate trash, you buy a bunch of appliances, you've got your cardboard boxes, you know, stored outside, you know, and, and you get, and you get rid of it within seven days. There are some, certainly some exceptions to that, when people have roll-offs and those, those kinds of things brought into their, brought into their property, but short of a situation where there are odors, dust, or debris there, you know, it was the feeling in my staff that the current ordinance is written was, was a reasonable ordinance, and, you know, is, is easy for people to, to understand, so unless there are some specific concerns around this that council members might have, you know, my staff felt that what we had right now worked, and there wasn't a need for a significant change.
Ms. Dozeman, and then Mr. Pond.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to know whether compost is categorized as refuse or rubbish, because what I, some people would normally throw away in their trash, some people put in a compost. How is that regulated?
So, we had this discussion today.
So, it's timely.
So, mulching is viewed as sort of as an environmental kind of good thing, right? And short of it causing, you know, you know, really strong odors or some other sort of hazard, I'm not sure that it's, you know, specifically, you know, fits within this definition. I suppose it could fit within the definition of garbage, if somebody considered, you know, greens that, you know, were thrown out to be mulched in the dirt, and those kinds of things might be, might be garbage, but, you know, we, we're just not, usually the odor kinds of issues that we get are around some of our ag locations, and those probably have to do more with manure control than, than anything else.
Mr. Pond?
I'd just say that if, if this seems to be working for staff, and we can enforce to this, I would just assume, leave this. I can poke holes in it, I mean, if I leave the wrong day and miss taking out my trash, they could be out there for, for more than seven days, but I try not to do that, and I'm sure that there, it sounds like we're enforcing things with, with some of those nuances in mind, so, and I think the other local codes that are listed here, I think some of the things that we've just previously discussed kind of cover some of the kind of accumulation of what we would consider junk, or, and so I'm good with leaving this just the way it is.
Additional discussion, or should, do we have consensus on that? Consensus, chiefly with the way it is? Moving to trash containers.
Trash containers. And here, you see the, the requirement of, it's got to be in a governmental plastic container, or in a sealed plastic bag, and then you see other codes, and the distinction is the differences, contrasts you could maybe raise would be, how often should be, they be removed? You could go there. The, this is about being screened from, from view, have to be in adjacent streets or in rear side yard when they're not, you know, being on pickup day, and how quickly they have to be, you know, brought back up into that area. One of the key issues probably is sealed plastic bags or not, and all of us, when we fill the container and, and a given week, there's more stuff, for whatever reason. for whatever reason, we all use plastic bags and we put it out there, and that's what we do. And, uh, that's allowed here and some communities not. Um, and then there's the, the sort of how quickly do you want it to be picked up? Usually trash pickups once a week for most providers. It's waste management here, right?
We've got, everybody, everybody's here.
Everybody's, oh, everybody's-
Everybody's here.
Right, oh yeah, what's the matter with me? Yeah, everybody's here.
That's this city.
That's a separate battle you can fight, but we won't fight that tonight.
Yes. Let us, let us not digress.
Chief has something to add.
Okay.
So, uh, when discussing this particular, uh, these particular recommendations with my staff, you know, one of the things they brought to my attention is different parts of the city look differently. And so if, uh, you're on the east side of the city, essentially Sheridan to, to about Fenton or Gray Street, you have a lot of alleys. And, and so, uh, trash containers and sometimes trash, you know, is, is stored in that alleyway until it's, until it's picked up, where in other parts of the city, you'll, you'll see trash. It's, uh, containers are either in the garage or on the side of the house or the rear of the house where they're not as open and, and in view. Certainly, I think preferably from an aesthetics perspective, you know, storage of trash containers to the rear or, uh, side where they're not visible is probably, uh, in a lot of communities, preferable. Uh, certainly having, you know, those trash, uh, bins removed within, uh, you know, my staff felt 24 hours, you know, a day was, was reasonable, but there was a recognition that different parts of the city look differently. And, and certainly the east side of the city is, is a little bit more challenging, uh, with, with the alleyways than other areas of the city are, so, for your consideration.
Mr. Matthews, and then, uh, Mr. Davis.
My apologies, I thought we addressed the, a little bit, the issue of roll-offs and dump, temporary dumpsters. Having been there cleaning out, uh, an estate, you know, and, and having to actually all have an eight or a 10-yard dumpster twice or three times in the driveway, um, did we decide that that, we were clear with that?
Yeah, I think we, we addressed that several years ago. I think it was, um, more of the, uh, the permanent, um, placement of a dumpster on some properties. They had to be, I think we shrunk them down to one cubic, one cubic yard or something. They had to be screened still, um, but-
Talking about temporary.
More temporary.
When my grand, when my in-laws died, I mean, we had a 10-yard dumpster roll-off in the driveway for two or three weeks, well, because it had to be replaced. Uh, we actually filled it up and needed more. You know, it was there for probably three weeks. Now, I don't think any of the neighbors complained because they understood that my wife's parents had died and they were just-
Sure.
We were cleaning, cleaning up.
And I know with, if you have an active building permit, you can have a dumpster. Um, I, as, just as long as you have a building permit. I don't know for a cleanup situation if our code addresses that. That's a good question. Do you know?
No, it's, it's, it's a situation where we get a lot of potential for illegal dumping. When you go to bed at night, and then the guy down the street sees a container, he goes and dumps it. So then it's an issue of, okay, why doesn't the city take this couch away because it's obviously not mine? Well, fortunately, you gave the opportunity to have somebody dump yours, so I would say-
I understand, we were recipients of some unwanted gifts. But on the other hand, I mean, the two of us going through the estate, it couldn't be done overnight. I mean, you know, it took a week, and we were working at the time, so we're coming over evenings and weekends.
I, I think the situation would be an odor nuisance. We had one where a container was there for a week, and it looks like the contractors that were working and filling up the dumpster also put their food waste in the dumpster. So when the heat of the day came about, started to permeate with food waste within the container.
Phil, I think the question is, what, what's our code do? Does our code allow, allow them for cleanup?
It's allowed, yeah.
For, for how long?
You have a permit and it's on a improved structure, improved surfacing, you can have it.
So I think what, I think what Larry's asking is, is, I don't have a permit, but I'm, you know, I'm cleaning out a, a house, so it might be an area that we need to look at.
Yeah, and we weren't, I mean, we weren't tearing down walls or anything, but we had to take carpet out because it was old, we had to take clothes, some, I mean, we just-
So let us look at the refuse-
Boxes and boxes and stuff.
And the refuge, I mean, because I think that that implies, you know, your typical, you know, week-to-week trash. Let us look at the roll-off perspective, you know, because I know exactly what you're talking about. And, uh, I'm not aware of that being an issue unless it's an odor kind of thing, uh, but, uh, we'll, we'll look at that as a part of this and get back with you.
Thank you. Ms. Davis, and then Ms. Hoppe, and then Ms. Weaver.
Um, so, I'm gonna be like the code person, but, um, one, I, I do have to say that, um, the bottom bullet of movable trash containers, recyclable materials, um, I, I like that because it, it kind of implies except on collection day, so it needs to be kept in a storage area regardless if it's the back of the alley or in your garage or, or whatever. And I can think of some rental areas that keep their big allied waste, blue trash cans out in the front-
Oh, no.
-all the time. Um, so I, I would like it to kind of have that 24-hour, I mean, here it says 12, but even if we say 24 hours, say you get home late and you're tired and you don't get your trash can, go get it in the morning, I do like that idea because I, you do see people leaving their trash cans out for two and three days. Um, and I, the other thing that I, I'm thinking of myself is that it says, uh, garbage except in a covered metal or plastic container. I think some folks don't have trash cans that are necessarily covered, um, but, I mean, I mean, it is, I mean, the cover blows off and you never see it again, but it's contained trash and, and respectable, so I don't know, I'd hate for someone to call on somebody who was actually doing all the right things and just because their container wasn't covered that code enforcement's gonna call on them. Um, so I don't know if there's a way that I'd, you know, I mean, I appreciate the covered part of it, but I also appreciate that if you have a trash container and it's, the trash is contained, that you don't need it covered, so.
Ms. Hoppe?
Chief.
Or, did you have a, okay.
Sorry, I, I saw chief pull the microphone close. I thought he was gonna say something. Um, so, um, on trash containers, I agree with, uh, Ms. Davis in the, on the end, as long as, I guess my question is, what is the definition of a storage area? So like in East Wheat Ridge, along the alleys, is it out of the alley on their property, off to the side? Is that considered a storage area? Or does it have to be behind a fence? Or, you know, so I would prefer if, it doesn't necessarily mean it has to be behind a fence, but if it's, you know, out and by their back fence? So I guess that would just be a definition question about storage area?
Well, I think you could certainly, sorry, but on that point, I think you could, at a minimum, you could say something about, should be moved, uh, back from the alley curb or, or collection point. You know, because we, we all have different ways and places of storing things, but, but at a minimum, you, you'd like them not to be kind of at the col, wherever the collection point is, moving them back from there. On covering, on your point, and, and it may well be that the CSO has a different view, but, but I suspect that if the only violation is there's no cover, it's not gonna get written. But if you do have somebody with trash cans and there's stuff in it that's blowing out because there isn't a cover, I think you wanna be able to write them for that. So I would strongly urge that you leave that in because it's there for that reason. And if the only violation is there's no cover and there's no other problem, I really doubt that that's a, that's a, you know, ticket's gonna get, get written. Yeah. Sorry, Ms. Hoppe, I interrupted you.
Um, so then, kind of off of what you said about it has to be pulled back off of the curb or whatever, but then that doesn't solve the issue of if your collection point is on the curb in front of your house? Um, some houses have sidewalks, some don't, but like if it's, you know, there in the gutter on the other side of the sidewalk. So that doesn't really address that issue. So I don't know, I, I, you know, I don't, I don't know how you go about fixing that. Like if you're on an alley, then, if you're on an alley, then as long as it's pulled out of the alley and on your, onto your property on the side, then it's okay. Otherwise, it needs to be, um, you know, in a storage area. I, so, I don't know, those-
Should we ask if there's general support or not for this, this concept of requiring the, the receptacles to be, to be moved back? If there's no general support, there may be and may not for this last bullet, then we don't go there.
I support moving our trash cans out of the street in public view.
Okay. Are, are you done, are you done?
I just have one other question about the, I'm not done.
Okay.
Um, so then, my other question is, do we, we require, uh, roll-off dumpsters to have a permit to be on the street, correct? So like if there's construction, then they have to have a permit?
Construction.
Okay. And but, or even if, let's say, if the driveways can't hold the-
If they can't be on the, the preference is that they're on private property, but some properties don't have that ability, so they can be on the street with the permit.
With a permit. So we already have a process for people to have to get a permit for a dumpster. We just only enforce it if it's on the street, not necessarily if it's on private property. Okay.
Ms. Weaver, and then Mr. Matthews.
I don't mean to keep going back to some of this stuff, but I've, I've literally received warnings and violations for every one of these codes. So, so I just, I, I wanna share the perspective that, that there, I think there still does need to be some leniency. My experience is I have more than 26 neighbors that all see into my big backyard. And I have been, I have, like I said, I have been called on, on just about every one of these codes. And I think you all have all been on the property and you know what I'm doing and, and those, and, and so I, I have no problem with us redoing these codes, and I think it's very important that we think about it. But I, I do want us to consider that we've also heard a lot of people in the last three months talk about the, the character of Wheat Ridge and that we do have people still doing agriculture, be it few, um, and we still do have horse properties. And, and just to give you a, a small example of some of this, um, there've been people who've called on my property when their dumpster was actually smelling and reported it as animal smell. And in, in, you know, if you've grown up on a farm, you know the difference. There's, they're both bad, but they're, they're different. Um, and so I think there's a bit of, of, we can write these and we can agree to these, but there are people who will read it to the letter and call, and, and then it becomes sort of a different conversation. Um, and I don't really know what the answer is, uh, because I've, I feel like I've had a great relationship with PD and, and, and they have great ways of solving these things. I would just, again, encourage sort of, I, I think the officers do a great job of exactly what you described, of sort of figuring out what the issue is. And, and, and I would prefer that, that, as we've been talking about, sort of give, uh, Mr. Dahl and, and, and the, the police sort of guide us on these, on these codes, but remembering that there are a few properties where, like, I can't store all of my business stuff for the farm because I have buildings that are too small and grandfathered in and, you know, sort of not modern enough to hold some of the, the machinery and things. And, and-
But you have a business permit for your farm, so that's different.
I do, but you just heard Lauren say that, that, uh, you are not allowed, pardon? That you are not allowed to store, so, so technically, someone could call and say, she has two trailers, even though I'm using both of them, you know, all the time. So it's just something to, to think about. And, and, and I'm not, I'm not concerned especially because I'm having this conversation all the time, um, but I do think there are our neighbors and things who are actively, I'm going to have occasionally a dumpster load of manure getting moved around the farm. That's going to smell for a temporary time, you know? And, and, and so there are just ways, I think, to also respond to our population base of, hey, we want an agricultural feeling, we also have to deal with some of those things sometimes, not saying all of them, and I'm not saying that, that we shouldn't, that I shouldn't apply to the, all of the code. But I am asking for sort of openness in how we deal with things like smells and trash and, 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 there's this gray area, as we've been discussing. So thanks for letting me bring it up again. We'll talk more in, about weeds in a second.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Matthews, and then Mr. Urban.
Thank you. Yeah, you're, you're barking up around the same tree I was about as far as zoning and uses, but, um, I always kind of wondered about people that bought a house under the runway glide path and then complained about the noise of the airplanes. I mean, if I buy a house next to a farm, I would hope I would be tolerant enough to say, gee, that reminds me of going with my dad to visit farms. Anyway, um, on this trash deal and this, whether or not to be in storage areas, again, is that an issue that needs to be kind of concealed? Are we talking about the normal 30-gallon trash cans? Or are we talking about three-yard dumpsters that, you know, are behind a restaurant or?
Well, I, I think we're talking still about the kind of residential properties. Is that-
I think these are residential properties.
I mean, I think it's, you know, there's a big difference between a, a 30-gallon trash can and, and a dumpster.
Yeah. Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And to that point about, uh, buying a house underneath a, a, you know, next to an airport and then complaining about the noise, uh, that reminds me of Fort Morgan where they were sued because the sugar beet factory smelled. It's like, that, that is Fort Morgan. And it, to Councilmember Weaver's, uh, point about leniency, leniency only works when the property owner is communicating and working with the city. And leniency does no favors to the staff, uh, in a situation where the homeowner or property owner isn't communicating and, and isn't working with us. So as much as we want to have that leniency, I've seen a number of cases where leniency is being abused by, uh, those that do not wish to comply. Uh, and they use that to say, well, you did this for this person and now you're doing this to me, and so it seems unfair. And so as much as I would, in a perfect world, those that are communicating, working with us deserve leniency, but at the same time, uh, at the end of the day, when we're talking about how to remediate situations, uh, leniency really isn't the answer. It's gotta be a black and white, letter of the law type situation where staff can point to and say, this is why I'm standing on your property dealing with this issue, because the code says X, Y, and Z. And I guess that kind of gets to the heart of this entire issue, is that we can write these rules and, and develop these codes, but the effectiveness of them comes down to the city staff's ability to communicate with the property owners and the property owners to communicate with city staff. So I, I think we need to make them as, as, uh, strict as possible in the sense that we don't want to leave too much vagueness and maybe city staff can provide us with some feedback on that, but I think you would want crystal clear language that we can use versus leniency.
Right. So, you know, there's, there's a continuum that we operate on, right? So it's, you know, it's the people in the community that want strict code enforcement and they want everyone cited, and there are those that want to just be left alone, right? So that's why we, we give our officers discretion. You know, we, you know, they're problem solvers, they're trained to problem solve, but in every case that we go out, if there's a violation, we're gonna write a warning. Uh, there's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. It's, it's, it's not, it's not a fine, it's a warning and it starts the process and it starts the communication piece. I think one of the frustrations that we certainly share, and, and I know some of you do, is, is, are the properties where, you know, you don't get that compliance and the issues on that particular property bleed over into other areas. You know, and we've had a number of them, you know, in, in my tenure as a chief, where they involve public works and community development. And it's not just a chapter 15 issue, right? It's chapter 24, it's chapter 26. You know, and, and, and they're, they're much broader in terms of that. But those, those are generally pretty rare when, when, I mean, when you look, I think in 2017, I was just looking, you know, we had, uh, 2,500 calls for service related to nuisance code violations. And, and of that, you know, we ended up citing, uh, you know, uh, you know, 1,100, almost 1,200 people, uh, in, in that situation. So, uh, you know, where we gave them a warning. And, and, you know, about 88% of the people, when they get, by the time they get a first citation, uh, they're, they're in compliance, they want to comply. So, uh, you know, I, I think the model we have, and it's really what Amanda's been speaking about, uh, you know, where, where our officers use discretion and they work with reasonable property owners to address issues, I think has, has worked for us as a city.
Chief, do you think we need to strengthen our law, our, our ordinances with respect to, to the trash containers? We now have, uh, permit garbage in a covered or metal plastic container and a sealed plastic bag awaiting pickup for disposal, and, uh, just prior to that, we say that they've got to pick it up within seven days. Is that, is that a reasonable, is that regulation working for us?
I, it's, it's reasonable to, uh, for me, I think it's reasonable to my staff and, and talking to them about it. You can certainly, I think, where we have issues more often than- You can certainly, I think, where we have issues more often than not, you know, are, are in the alleyways of the city, on, on the east side of the city. And, you know, if, if, if we want the kind of community where you store your trash behind a fence, you know, on the side of a house, where it's out of view, I think that's something certainly you can give us direction.
You know, I, I guess I live on the, I live on that side of town, and I actually happen to have built my trash receptacle in the back, behind a, a concrete wall, and they don't, they don't move. I put the trash in them, the guy collects them, and, and it's a pretty good situation. But, you know, many properties are different, there, there are people that take their trash out to the curb and move it back up, you know, Ms. Hoppy, I, I assume you have a long driveway, and you take yours down there in the morning and bring it back in the evening, and, you know, is our regulation flexible enough to accommodate the properties that we have, and strong enough to where we can enforce the code?
My staff, you know, thinks that it is at this point.
Does, how does council feel about that? Do you think that we're, are we okay where we are? We have consensus on that.
So I guess my question is, and I guess my question, and then I have a comment to that, is, so where are we on requiring that people remove it after a certain amount of time? So I guess if we're, I guess in the interest of time, if we're not gonna, if, if, I guess we had some discussion and we were okay with that, and now we're saying, well, police chief thinks as good as it is, then I guess my point is, is why are we having this discussion?
Well, I, I guess...
So I guess I would, if, if our discussion and our feedback is like, well, okay, if you guys are fine with it, then never mind this whole discussion we had, then I'd rather have their recommendation at the beginning than us have a whole discussion around our thoughts and our opinion, and then have it be like, well, you think it's okay, we'll keep it as it is. So I guess that would be my only question, and in the interest of time, we probably would have just saved, you know, 30 minutes on, on the discussion about it, if the police chief and code enforcement have a recommendation of what would be best managed.
Well, I was merely responding to...
No, 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 I'm, I...
The mayor's question and, and what my staff has told me, I, I don't know that the specific, whether or not specific amount of time is, you know, that, that, that trash is, is picked up, you know, within the seven days, or the way our current ordinance reads that we're seeing any, you know, significant issues, unless you look at the east side of the city, and, in, in the alleyways. And if we're going to get complaints, that generally tends to be, to be where, where it is in regards to that, so.
What I heard was seven days, whether that's in there or not, it should be, I heard keep, it's in there, okay, I heard keep covered for that one reason, but something that is not in there that I also heard was expand the availability of a roll-off dumpster to other than just a, a construction permits, otherwise expand that permit program. And if I need to clean a house out, or I'm doing a remodel on my own or whatever, clean a house out separate apart from construction, I'd be able to apply for and get a permit. And we could certainly add that, that's my note.
Well, I, I, I would disagree on that, because we did no construction, I mean, we just had a house full of everything.
No, that's what I said, whether it, expand it beyond the availability just for construction to other things like needing to clean a house out.
Okay.
Exactly your, your point.
But either way, you can, I guess if you get a roll-off and put it on your own property, do you need to get a separate permit for that?
That's what we're going to look into.
Right now, if you, you know, I'm sorry, Jerry, right now, if you're, if you have a building permit, you're going to have that, but in, in the case that Mr. Matthews brought up with, and we've seen that in locations...
Okay, so even to get, even to have a roll-off on your property, you need to have a construction permit?
No, we're not saying that.
Okay.
We want to look at what other communities have in terms of a roll-off that might apply to situations like Larry, where, where you've got a deceased member, and you're, you're just cleaning it out, and there's just a lot of stuff going into a, and, into a container, so.
Or maybe you're going to be deceased yourself, and you want to get rid of a lot.
We all are going to be at some point.
Well, and I guess we did discuss about removing it away from the collection site.
We did, and I frankly did not hear consensus on that.
So, and I think you were speaking to, like, the 12 to 24-hour period of time when it needs to be removed from the curb, and also the conversation that we had of storage of those containers, either at the rear or side of the house, or...
And I don't recall us even asking for consensus, so...
Mr. Pond.
Well, we ended up asking for consensus on, on something that was lesser than those things, and I agreed to that. If it included the storage or the removal, I wouldn't have agreed to that consensus. If we want to have that, so to your, just to be responsive to you, I mean, we've talked about it, I don't think, I don't think talking about it was a bad thing, I don't think it's so much about just taking the recommendation, I mean, frankly, I don't think, I think the storage area is too complicated to try to regulate, and, and unless it's really needed, I think we can avoid that, and I think the, unless the, bringing it back, return to storage area the same day, you know, unless that's a huge issue, which I'm not hearing it is, then I'm not interested in regulating that as well, so that's...
So in the interest of, I'm just curious, if someone moves their trash out to the sidewalk, and it gets picked up every week, I can keep it there? As long as it gets picked up every week and it's covered?
I think that's, I think that's right, because, right in the sense of...
Not okay with that, but that's okay.
Well, I mean, but that's our current, that's our current condition, and I guess what I, my point was, is that if I heard that there's all these orphan trash cans on the curb for days on end, and we need to figure that out, then I agree this is the solution, but I hadn't heard that yet, so, I don't see that, and I didn't hear it.
I do in some areas.
Right, and so what, earlier when we were discussing this, in, in, in the samp, sample ordinances, there, there is a mention of 12 hours, and, and I had mentioned that my staff and I, when they reviewed that, suggested 24 hours is, is a reasonable kind of accommodation, so, you know, that, that trash bin's just not sitting out there in, in the driveway all the time and is an eyesore, so that's what we had, had recommended, so.
No, and I appreciate that, but it doesn't sound like council's in agreement with that bullet in general, so, but I'm with you.
Well, sounds like we've got some more discussion, Ms. Hoppy and then Mr. Matthews.
Well, I mean, what Christie asked was that, so right now, if someone puts their trash on the sidewalk, it can just stay there? We have no, we have no requirement for them to remove it from the collection site, and we have no, no timed requirement either. So, but it's...
That's correct.
If it's on a sidewalk, then it's potentially public property, and so they can leave their trash cans on, in the city right of way, or on public property for however long?
No, I, I think we could preclude that, because it's public property.
We do have an ordinance for obstructing streets and sidewalks, which we have issued.
So then my next question is, at the end of my property, there's, there's an easement that goes through there, the city's easement is there, so it's really funny, because you see everybody's driveways end, and then all this gravel start, which I think is really silly, but we don't have sidewalks. But with, it is, the way it is now, I could put my trash cans at the end of my driveway, and it's private property, but it's, has a public easement, and they can stay there? Or does it have to be removed because it's a public easement?
I'm, I'm not as sure of that, but the, can I just sort of broaden the discussion? The problem is, and we all know this, we have a whole, huge variety of, of configurations of residential property in this city, we just do. And so the, while I was trying with the remove it from the collection point idea, to try to, to have language that would cover all of those fact patterns, yours, 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 and yours, they're all different, they're all different. So, you, you know, I, it occurred to me that you couldn't say, bring it back and put it in a storage area from, protect it from view, because there's some, people just don't have such an area, you know, they put their trash out at the alley, and then they move it three feet back, and they're, they're done, that's really all they can do, and that's what I was trying to do with collection point. And at least that's off of public property, but you're, you're, so it's, it's not a very far distance, it doesn't go as far as I think, I think Councilmember Davis would like it to go, but the problem is you've got constraints based upon the, the properties, and so anything you direct us to do, I think needs, unless you get really complicated about, in this kind of property, it's this, and you don't want to go there, anything you direct us to do really has to take into consideration the, the, this, the physical variety of fact patterns, and the fact that some people have very little flexibility about where to keep their trash cans, and, and I'm open to any ideas you have.
I, I would agree with the, oh, sorry, did I jump in? I would agree with the take it away from the collection point, I mean, where I'm thinking of is, it's a group of apartments or whatever, and what happens is those white, or those blue trash cans sit there all week long, and there's no attempt to pull it back off the street, they just sit there sort, and it's, it's kind of on their gravel driveway and kind of on the street, but at least make the attempt to pull it back and, and put it close to your building or something, so we all don't have to look at trash cans seven days a week. I mean, the good news is, I don't live across the street from them, but it's still an eyesore when you drive by, and every day you see six blue trash cans out there all week long. And I think that's what I'm trying to avoid, I'm, what I'm trying to, to say is make an attempt to pull it away from the collection site out of public, you know, view, or, or not even view, but out of just public mainstream kind of area, just out of courtesy.
Mr. Matthews?
Precisely, and I'm amazed that there's two of us on council here that have the same issue in their neighborhoods, that the people just drive it out, drive it out, some of them leave it in the street, but then they just pull it behind the sidewalk and think that's okay. They walk out there every day to fill the darn trash can, why can't, and it's on wheels, and they got a concrete sidewalk, why can't they pull it back to the house at least and get it behind the fence?
So do you think something that if we had, you know, that you need to remove it back to a secure secluded location, or something like that, I mean, could you...
I wouldn't go that far, because there are properties that don't have places that are secluded, they just aren't, and as far as I think you could go and cover everyone before, because otherwise you will get people at this podium saying, thank you, here's my situation, you, I don't have that flex, you know, you will hear that. So as far as you can go, I think would be to move it from the collection point, we already know it can't be, it can't remain, it's on public property, and, you know, that's, that's, that's a one-size-fits-all, if you try to do more than that, you're going to have to have more sizes.
Yeah, I would agree, and I'm guessing it would be the officer's discretion on, if I just chose to move it three feet away, and I have, you know, another 26 feet behind me, that they could say, could you please move it closer to the building?
Yeah, they could request that, but that's a different size, isn't it, from, in, in terms of the, the, the next-door neighbor only has 10 feet?
Right.
You, you know, and so we're not saying, just so clearly, unless you want us to say it, in which case it's going to be awfully complicated, move it as far back as you have property, because that's now going to vary a whole lot, and I don't, I'm not recommending that for the reasons that you're going to see people up here complaining about that. It might be a start to move it back from collection point, and we'll see what kind of language we can share with you, and you can have this discussion a little bit more again when you see it, on First Reader Saturday.
Ms. Hoppy and then Mr. Matthews.
Well, I think we need to get a different consensus then, because I heard one of our members of council say that they wouldn't support if that came up, so I'm going to ask for consensus to add remove from collection point within 24 hours.
Well, could I, could I amend that?
Mr. Matthews?
Remove to a colle, from the collection point within 24 hours to a reasonably secluded area or something.
Nope. Remove from collection point within 24 hours is as far as I'll go, so, and that's, I'm asking for consensus.
And my, my reasoning for that is that in some properties, there is no secluded spot to bring it, that there is no place...
Ergo, that's why I said reasonably, and, and maybe that we have to say based on something, but I was just trying to say, if you bring it up next to the house, and that's all you have, that's what I consider reasonably secluded.
But in my case, I'm in a corner lot, so both, the two sides of my house are not secluded, so I'm, I'm not going to take my trash can behind my backyard, I, I don't think so. So I, I would just say remove from the collection point and leave it at that.
So I guess we need to ask for that again, so I'm asking for consensus to add remove from collection point within 24 hours.
Would council please raise your hands if that's a consensus? One, two, three, four, five. So we have sort of consensus on that? That's consensus.
Should we talk about the height of grass and weeds together? Might as well.
I thought we were already in the weeds.
We are, as you see, and I'm going to kind of combine these and see how we do, as, as you can see, we have a 12-inch requirement on grass, we have a 12-inch requirement on weeds, we have other things about weeds, don't become overgrown with them, and weeds outside the rear and side fences, but at least as regards height, just kind of trying to isolate that issue, because growing up as I did in the country, it was kind of hard to tell the difference between the grass and the weeds that you had, but you did know what 12 inches tall was, and so just on the subject of height, and maybe my, my, my attempt to combine the two will fail, but just on the, the subject of height, there's a 12-inch requirement, and what do you think? You see what other cities have done, which is that or lower.
Mr. Pond, tell us about that.
Yeah, I, I think in both of these cases, I'm, I'm okay with it, I think many of you know I have native grass in my yard that has a tendency, once the seed heads come in, that it's over 12, and, you know, I mean, I think there is a worthwhile, and they're not ornamental, it's 7,000 square feet of it, so it's, you know, I think there's, there's, I think, reasons to talk about flexibility related to native grass in order to, you know, but I, I, I think right now, it's, it seems, it seems workable, and that those conversations can happen through the planning commission and other things, and I would encourage that, but I mean, I, to me, it seems like, you know, it, it's okay. If we do lower the, the height, then I think we have to have more written flexibility in, into types of grasses, so that would be my case.
Additional comments, Ms. Weaver?
I support the 12 inches, just for the health of native grasses. I would also like to see something in the code put in about grazing or for animal feed, so, you know, my back eight acres are all rotationally grazed, and that's how, a few years ago, I sort of, you know, I have a rotational plan, that's the agreement with the city around that kind of thing, so just having the openness of if there is a rotationally grazing plan, not necessarily for a small residential property, but for those cases, I don't know what that language would look like, but I would appreciate just the acknowledgement that there are, there are reasons not to cut a field to 12 inches because it is animal field, or because I'm, I'm doing an agricultural practice.
Additional discussion? Well, it's up to you, I was kind of...
Those two sounded like gra, ornamental or native grasses, and not weeds, but Ms. Hoppy.
So I suppose we should separate weeds and grass, because I don't think that properties should have more than 12 inches of, of a weed patch, and we have some vacant properties that are just flat, that have like nothing on them, and I'm looking, thinking about like 38th and Kipling, behind the Apple Ridge Cafe, that lot can get really overgrown sometimes. I unfortunately have a, a neighbor who, we weren't able to get to his lawn to mow his lawn for him, but it is basically all weeds now, because the house has been empty for a while, and the weeds got up to like 12 inches, and they finally got, you know, a warning on that, we went over and mowed it for him, but prior to that, I was saying to my husband, we really need to go mow that, it looks horrible. So I think for weeds, that we should definitely go lower. I don't know the difference between ornamental grass and native Colorado grass, so I'm sorry that I can't really speak to that, but it sounds like you guys have information on grasses, so I would like to say no more than six inches on weeds, and then I'd like for us to address somehow crawling weeds that are growing through rocks and through concrete, and so, and I don't know how we go about that either.
Yeah. Well, where is the creeping weeds, because I want to talk about that one. You knew, that was the Christie rule.
Are these the, are these the noxious weeds?
They can be.
Down, down below?
Can I?
I don't see overgrown areas, because I even looked, because that's a Christie...
What's in the first bullet under weeds, owner of the apartment, she'll prevent... What's in the first bullet under weeds? Owner's, she'll prevent property from becoming overgrown with weeds. And I, I was looking for that too on, on weeds that don't have a habit of growing over 12 inches, obviously, so.
Ms. Davis?
How I would like it to read, if possible, if people would entertain the idea, is that it's weeds growing in otherwise landscaped areas. So if I've got something landscaped with rock and all of a sudden my rock becomes overgrown or half overgrown with weeds, that we don't just now call that a shrub. It's a weed. And I think that we see a lot of that. We see it's not only the crawl, but then again, it's, it's weeds in areas that aren't made for that. So even if it's, I mean, the problem is some of those weeds, I forget what they're called, but they spread out. So, so yeah, the bindweed stuff. And the thing is, is that doesn't grow 12 inches. It grows out and it shouldn't be growing out in a rock landscaped area. So I would almost want it to read something to the effect of, you know, or weeds growing in, weeds and grasses growing in an otherwise, other landscaped area, or I don't know how to. Police chief hasn't gotten my picture of the year this year because he usually gets it every year.
No, but my code enforcement officer will look.
But I think it's a perfect example that it wouldn't meet the six inch because it just gets smothered.
It might be helpful to hear from code enforcement on the subject of, you know, we've got a code that, that says a couple of things about weeds. Not any higher than 12 inches, I think, right? Right, yeah. On a adjacent tree to right of way and, and prevent property from being overgrown with weeds, which is not a height standard. It's just, you know, sort of a subjective, but important subjective standard. And I've kind of warned Phil that I was going to ask him this question. Is this, is this tool sufficient to address the issue that Christie raises or, or not? Or how would you approach that? Do you have an answer? Overgrown? So, so for example, I mean, I'm just asking the question. Christie says, "I've got a neighbor who's got," or there is a property with a landscaped area. Now it's full of weeds that don't grow that tall, but they're crawling all over. And someone calls you and you go out there. And so what would you do?
Right now it's height. That's what we deal with.
So you wouldn't write it for overgrown. You'd, you'd wait.
Possibly she's growing it as a decorative accent to something else that's in the landscaping, so.
Okay.
So I think, I, I think that there, there are a couple of things that, that we can look at. So, so there's, there, what I'm hearing is there's two issues in regards to weeds, right? There's the tall weeds and then, you know, there, there are the creeping kinds of weeds that you see and sometimes in rock, but sometimes you see they overtake grass and those kinds of things. What I'd like the opportunity to do is, is, is work with city attorney's office and take a deeper dive into this. So to me, as, as we heard from, from Phil, you know, it's kind of a "and" 12 inches. And I'm wondering if we could write the code so, you know, it talks about the height of weeds or an area that might be overgrown with weeds. So it might just be the insert, I don't have the code here right in front of me to look at, but it might simply be the insertion of a word "or" as opposed to an "and." But I think it's, it certainly is a valid, you know, concern and, and it's one that we can look at, see if we can address.
Can I add just one more thing to that?
Absolutely.
So I know Mr. Johnstone had that policy on the newly landscaped. And there was some good language in there. So I'm wondering if we could look at that language as well in his new landscape program and kind of the enforcement of that. Because maybe we could use some of that, mirror that language since we are enforcing that in other ways. Because I like that language.
All right.
Okay.
We'll look at that and bring that back.
Mr. Urban?
To that point about height, you could look at it and say both height and width. So in this situation, the weed is 12 inches, but it's along the ground, not standing up. And just on the issue of weeds in general, I would, I wouldn't necessarily be in favor of reducing the height of the weeds in the sense that, you know, for a large field or what have you, regardless of whether it's weeds or grass, if you begin to reduce that, that, that may cause erosion. The other thing to consider here is that if we become overly prescriptive on weeds, the, the exact, the unintended effect of us cracking down on this is that we're encouraging our residents to use more roundup-type chemicals and other things to eliminate this. And I understand we need to find a, a good balance between these issues. But in many cases, we see situations where, I don't know what I'm trying to say, but I, I think I would just, I would like to keep it where we are as far as 12 inches. And if we need to move it to a height then a width type description, that would be fine with that. But I would just, don't want to be too over-prescriptive on the weed issue.
So Epsom salt and vinegar is a good natural way to get rid of weeds.
Ms. Weaver?
I would just suggest that we also sort of move away from the language, "just weed," because that's such a broad, you know, it's anything I don't like, right? And, and so there are specific invasive weeds, which we can say, you can't have. But I think also coming back and engaging, this is what I've sort of learned from how the land, the agricultural perspective, is I'm required to have a management plan for weeds by the state with a, with a large piece of property like this. So it might be something where we do, we, we come up with sort of some of these descriptions, but then if, if there's a problematic property, we, you know, I think, I think, again, I think the officers are great. It's sort of, I think you, you brought it up. How is this part of your landscape plan? You know, how is the bindweed helping with your, with, because, you know, I think of examples like people, people digging up all their grass and, and putting in an edible landscape. Sometimes those are incredibly beautiful and sometimes people don't maintain them and they end up being huge weed patches and, and it's not so nice. But if you were to talk to them, right, they, they might get very upset and say, "Well, you know, it's a way of working with people rather than sort of saying the weeds, 'What's the plan? How, how are you adhering to your plan?'" So that just might be some language that I've, I've seen different communities use as well for, for addressing compliance.
Ms. Dozeman?
Sorry, that kind of sparked a light bulb. Do we allow for gardens in the front yards?
Mr. Matthews?
I'd just like to ask if we have, a little problem with the antithesis of this. We've got undeveloped properties and people drive over, drive over and it's just bare ground. And I'm thinking of one in particular, and then every time it rains, someone's got to check out their four-wheel drive. So they go out and mudslide in the, in the bare ground for a little bit and then they drive out and leave a track on the street. Do we have anything that addresses, I'd rather see weeds than bare grounds, you know, a lack of vegetation?
Perhaps a vehicle tracking pad?
It becomes a stormwater management issue. Yeah, if there's no weeds. Yeah, and, and we do have regulations behind that. Yeah.
Do you have some, some insights into?
Yes. What I, what I think I've heard so far is we're sticking with the 12 inches on, on grass and for that matter, on weeds. But on weeds, the chief suggested that based upon this discussion, we take a deeper dive into it, especially as regards weeds that don't necessarily grow taller, instead grow, you know, sideways into areas devoted to landscaping or that aren't a part of a, sort of some kind of legitimate landscape plan. And we can look at what Ken Johnstone did for the, for help there. And rather than sort of saying, "Okay, here's what we'd like your consensus on, do these three things," maybe the consensus is that, that we're directed to pursue that, that plan. Because I think what we end up with may, may, may work and it'll at least be a little more concrete for you if you don't object to that on the subject of weeds.
I'd like to make a consensus that we move forward with allowing city staff and the city attorney to develop a plan relative to the weed issue.
Okay.
Terrific.
That's, looks like a consensus.
Number seven of nine is noxious weeds. And this may be easy. We don't have a prohibition per se, at least if I'm reading this right, and others do. The state of Colorado and Jefferson County both have invasive and noxious weed lists. The state statute changes that list regularly. And it would be, I think, appropriate and fairly easy for us to add the prohibition on noxious weeds as maintained by either the, the state, which has weed law that I'm familiar with, or Jefferson County, either one. Objections to doing that?
I would move that consensus forward?
Yes, Ms. Weaver.
My understanding is that the city is already managing per the state law or county law on invasive weeds.
We do.
We are, but we don't speak to it specifically in code.
Do we need to? Do we need to? If, like right now, Park and Rec comes over and they actually deal with invasive weeds on.
Right, so you're talking about Parks and Recreation. I'm, I'm talking about the chapter 15 application.
I guess I'm asking, do we need it if our city is already dealing with it?
Dealing with on city property. Yeah, we're dealing with on public properties, not, this is for residential, private property, noxious weed.
Right, they, well. Okay.
The city doesn't have a, an obligation frankly, to manage noxious weeds on private property. It may occasionally do that, but the point is, this nuisance ordinance affecting, you know, private property generally, and we don't have a prohibition on noxious weeds on private property generally.
Thanks. I was misunderstood on, on what.
Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So speaking to that point regarding public versus private property, public being the city of Wheat Ridge's property, but what about other districts, the state of Colorado, C.DOT right-of-way and other areas that are not within the purview of the city but are within city limits? We're talking right now about private property, but would that include property owned by other governmental entities, school property, whatever it may be?
It does. The city has the right to ticket others. Every now and again, you get an objection from a governmental or quasi-governmental entity saying, "We're immune." And sometimes that has to get litigated. But most of the time around land use issues, with some exceptions where there's state preemption, you know, requiring something that, that C.DOT says, "Well, we can't do because we have to reroute the highways." Most of the time, you, you can impose local regulations. And, and so we, we don't, I think we define person to be pretty broadly in terms of the applicability of the chapter. So we'd be able to write up a special district's property for weeds if we needed to.
I guess to that point, there's several C.DOT right-of-way areas, one by 48th and Wandsworth, that is just basically no man's land and it's overgrown with brush and God knows what. And so not just noxious weeds, but just in general, overgrown those types of properties. And I would assume they have noxious weeds in them, but that, that'd be a concern for me.
Mr. Matthews?
Along those lines, the whole, along the whole length of the Front End Road on the south side of I, I-70 from, at least from where you start to hit, you know, the park down there, it used to be Johnson Park, whatever, all the way down to Youngfield. We fight mowing and trash cleanup on that in our district. And I've got, gotten calls for the last three and a half years over that because C.DOT refuses to do anything.
I've received those, those contacts over the years as well. And usually the place the city has started has been outreach through Public Works because Public Works has more of an ongoing relationship, you know, with, with C.DOT. And over the years, the city has, has approached C.DOT through Public Works with varying degrees of success. But to answer council member Urban's question, we could ticket them if, you know, if it got to that. We, we could. Again, it's a matter of, you know, where the resources are spent, but I realize it's a big impact. But just from a pure legal standpoint, they're within the city's jurisdiction for that purpose.
Ms. Weaver?
I do feel we should deal with noxious weeds. My concern is that the response, the natural response for most people would be to spray. And so it would mean a lot more spraying.
So I think one of the things that we, we try to do with, with any changes to our code is education. And that, that certainly could be something that we could look at in terms of using connections and our other social media.
I'm going to have to get more goats.
Right. More goats.
Phil, did you, did you discern a direction?
I discerned a direction. Unless you object, we'll include a prohibition on the maintenance of noxious weeds as defined by, we'll go with, we'll look and see what Jefferson County has as a list, but I'm pretty sure they've got a pretty good one. The extension office probably does. If not, the state of Colorado maintains a list.
Bindout of the heads, do we have consensus on that?
Consensus.
Okay. Bringing us to number eight of nine, fences and walls. You see the, the language that the city has in terms of maintaining fences and walls. You see what other cities have done. Probably, they, they look a lot alike, you know, it's no question. It's a little subjective, I think. The only big difference I see is when you flip the page of the last bullet from other cities. I'm not sure who that is. It's a, there's a, an objective standard of 30%. We don't have that in, in the city's code. This may be a, is it broken or not kind of standard? We wanted to raise it to your attention because of course it always gets, you know, you get people on both sides of this, this question. And I'll, I think you already know, you will not satisfy everyone here. And half the people will like what you've done, the other half won't. Because the half that like it will, will want that enforcement. The half that don't will perceive that it's improper enforcement of a fence or a wall that looks fine. And it's kind of subjective. And here, I assume we're kind of complaint-driven around this. But I don't have major recommendations to make. I don't know that the 30% number helps that much. Maybe code enforcement can, can tell us whether they would prefer to have a percentage. But it's percentage of what and what are you measuring? We do have that standard and we use it and we ticket occasionally, I assume, for that. Or do we or not? Or, yes?
Yeah, percentages are hard to figure. I mean, we're looking at
You got it.
Total area versus seen area versus concealed area because it's behind some undergrowth. It's a sticky formula to try and have someone articulate. You have 30% versus 36%.
So the standard we have now, without that, is something that you're using, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And one of the other reasons this was put on the list too is because we've noticed, I've received complaints about a couple of properties where their fence are, is large pieces of plywood. And it goes to the question, do you want to regulate more specifically what types of materials are used? I, I would think we don't want a bunch of fences with plywood up, but that's not, it's, I don't think our current, code currently drugs that specifically enough on types of materials. So that was an example of, of one type of fence and that's why I asked to have this on the list.
Discussion. Ms., we'll start with Ms. Davis.
I'm going to make this quick. I, I mean, I think it's fine the way it is and if we need to add some reasonable material. But I guess my question would be, can we move the weeds and gravel and paved parking areas into the weed section? It's kind of in a goofy place. And I'd love to see that.
Ms. Weaver, did you have a, are you okay? Mr. Pond? Mr. Pond's okay? Any further discussion on weed or fences and wall maintenance? Yes, ma'am?
I actually do have a question. I, I, there is a, a fence in Wheat Ridge that's made of old doors. Is that okay?
I own that fence.
Oh, I, I think it's really cool. I, no, I do. I mean. I do like the fence. I was just curious if it's, you didn't have to admit it.
Yeah. I'm not before. I think in the council meeting.
But I, I, I think-
We also have a fence that's made out of old skis, so.
Yeah, so I guess, I guess, are we just gonna call out plywood? Because I'm okay with that, because I think there's also other creative, really cool things happening.
Mr. Pond?
Yeah. No, I'm not even okay with plywood. I mean, that, you can use plywood creatively, just fine. You, okay, so, I mean, if it's just thrown up and- Then that's, that's, that's wrong. An assembled, a, a, a designed, constructed, assembled, you know, preserved fence that involves plywood, fine. I mean, you know, I may, may not like it, but just like-
But plywood as a repair for an otherwise six-foot cedar fence or something like that, that, you know, that would not be-
Right, and plywood's just kind of leaning up against poles or, I, I mean, so, I, again, I don't know how you write all of that. That's, that is a, a problem, because I think it starts to, you know, you start to go down roads where you're like, all of a sudden, "Well, no, no, we do like old door fences, sorry, just, but..."
Is this, uh, Mr. Dahl, is this where you address boarded-up windows, broken and boarded-up windows in buildings? Or is that?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Uh, is this where you would address, uh, broken windows and boarded-up windows?
Yes, it would be in this section.
It would be in this section?
Yep. Uh, we've got the, that, the language, as you see a little later on, uh, disorderly house. And, uh, there's a definition, I think, disorderly house should be, uh, would, would be, uh-
Oh, that's, okay.
Keeping a property in a manner which is, just, just, uh, we could certainly add it there.
Okay.
Does that have to be house, or it gonna be?
Does this apply to-
Well, that's, that's a term of art, but can we go back to the plywood and the fences and just put a bow on that, so that we, if you don't mind?
Ms. Hoppy?
So I guess one thing we could, we could maybe try to add into the language is that it has to be structurally sound, and then we could say, "Any repairs of damaged fences or walls shall be made with materials comparable in composition."
Yeah. I think that's, I see that elsewhere, I think that's a very reasonable standard.
Mr. Urban?
I was gonna say something along the, those lines, that there, there's a difference between treated lumber and untreated lumber. I would assume plywood is untreated lumber, and most fences would be made out of some sort of treated lumber, I would assume.
You can get treated plywood, yeah.
So what, what happens in a situation where the plywood is, you know, four inches wide, and so you have, you know, planks of plywood that you're putting up now, is that?
I think you certainly could say-
Submit it to the Fence Commission, we'll be, uh, starting.
How about this, you say that plywood's not an acceptable repair, uh, material, and that repairs of fences have to be made with the same or s- similar, they're like, materials, and call out plywood is not an acceptable repair material, and kind of leave it at that?
Plywood lobby's gonna be upset about that.
Of course, if they, you know, maybe if they cut it at four inches on center and had it spaced and stained, it, it might, it might be an acceptable repair.
That would be highly unlikely.
Have you, well, you know, there's a lot of situations. Have you generated enough information on this to-
For someone to say, "What Dahl said is the consensus"? Someone wanna say that?
What Dahl said is the consensus?
Okay, so we-
I would just like to say that I really like the fence that's made out of doors, just for the record, okay?
Keep digging.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
All right, before you move on, I'd like to interject.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I'd like to kind of address the eight-hundred-pound grill in the room here just a little bit before we move on to enforcement and citation enforcement, because it fits in with this first part a little bit better. And that is, um, while our folks are out there cruising our highways and byways writing citations, do we want to maintain what I believe we have right now as a reactive code enforcement policy as compared to a proactive code enforcement pro- uh, policy? I have something here, and I can pass it around later, I didn't get your time to copy it, but it's, uh, just some bullet points written by Sean E. O'Rourke, who's the Code Enforcement Manager for Orlando, Florida. And he kind of contrasts the difference between reactive and proactive. And if I could just spend a couple minutes really quickly, I'll try to get through these bullet points. Uh, aspects of reactive is complaint-driven only, and I believe right now, our, our codes officers can drive down the street, and if, they'll see a gazillion things, but unless there's an actual citizen complaint, they won't address it.
That's not correct.
As a, for instance, um, our favorite duplex is on Thirty-Eighth Avenue, where we came in and they made them cover two cars. The covers are now looking more like, um, spaghetti, and the cars are no longer covered, and I know we've gotta have codes enforcement driving past that every day. And that's been, what I've been told in the past is that they really don't, unless there's a fire danger or something like that, don't address things unless there's a, a citizen complaint. And so let's, I guess maybe we ought to address that just question first. Are we a reactive department or proactive?
We're proactive department. I think we've demonstrated that with our traffic, life quality, and crime meetings. We've identified neighborhoods as well as businesses, business areas in the city that we take a community policing approach, we meet with residents, we talk to them about the issues that we're seeing, we talk to them about the issues that they are seeing. We go in, uh, with what I'd call a carrot and stick approach. You know, we go in with dumpsters, we encourage them to clean the property up.
Uh, if, if you would, though, do, will a- Will our people go out and write citations without a complaint?
Yes, we do, Larry, we do it all the time. So, so you've, you've got seven code officers who have responsibility in, in a city of thirty-two thousand, seven days a week for about eighteen hours a day. Do they see every code violation? Do they address everything that you see? No, they probably don't. They, they address, you know, the significant, significant issues, but understand that these people are answering a variety of citizen-based complaints as well as taking, you know, proactive enforcement, uh, in terms of what they do. We don't have enough code enforcement officers probably to address, you know, every issue that, that you, you might see or other people might see in, in the community, but we certainly work towards, you know, accomplishing that. And I would really encourage you, if, if, if you don't think that we're, we're proactive, that you go out and actually ride with a code enforcement officer on a couple of tours and see exactly what they do, see what their call board looks like when they, when they come on duty, and, and see the types of activities.
Chief, I appreciate your comments, I'll be happy to do that. And I will admit, I've not had significant contact with code enforcement officers since we've changed over our, our, uh, procedures a little bit, but in the past, I've had code officers tell us they don't do anything unless there's a citizen complaint, and then we need to educate.
I, I, I just beg to disobey with you, I, I think, I think that that's, uh, 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 preposterous. You know, we, uh, uh, answer over two thousand calls for service, those are calls that come in from citizens, and those are also generated by, by our code officers. And remember, they just don't have code enforcement as their responsibility, they also have the responsibility for all animal control calls, and responsibility for all the park enforcement. We, and you go to a larger city, and you see those three functions are, are done by three different groups of people, and we have asked this, this group to handle all three of those areas, and at certain times of the years, those, those three areas can be pretty significant in, in, in terms of handling. And I'd be happy to sit down with you individually and, and talk through what some of your concerns are, but, uh, you know, they are proactive. I think the TLC program that we've had has been pretty, uh, has, has been very effective in terms of addressing some of the problem areas that council and others have seen in the city. Our Dumpster Day program is, is, is a success, our Large Item Pickup is a success. Those are proactive things. Those, those aren't things where, you know, we wait for a particular problem, those are things that we're doing in addition. One only has to look at the Connections Newsletter and things that are posted on social media to see that we take a really proactive approach to trying to educate our citizens about what they're required to do and, and, and what the law states in regards to different things. So, uh, we could certainly argue, uh, you know, uh, you know, afterwards in regards to what you think is proactive and what I think is proactive, but I can tell you on the other side of the equation, uh, you know, code enforcement's about half of the job that your police chief does, in terms of dealing with people that are either angry about code enforcement or don't want any code enforcement. So, so there is that other component in the city that, that exists, that, uh, code enforcement's great in, in, until it involves me, and, and what we try to do, and what, uh, uh, what I try to do as police chief is to balance that, but certainly recognize that I know where code enforcement was in two thousand and five, when I became the police chief, and it was a major issue in this city, and where I see code enforcement today, where it's, it's not the issue that it was in two thousand and five. We have made significant strides as, as a community in terms of cleaning up our community. And, and quite frankly, and, and some of you have heard me say this before, uh, the big, the, the major issues from a life quality and a safety perspective aren't necessarily with single-family residents that, or the duplex, but there, there are the multifamily areas in the city that need to be addressed. And, and, and I get the political will of council and the political will of the NRS is not to, is not to, to, to go down that pathway, but that, quite frankly, you know, if you were to, if, if you ask Ken Johnstone or you ask me, is where we see the significant code issues that need to be addressed in, say, certainly some single families, certainly some duplex, but when you look at your fourplexes, your eightplexes, and your apartment complexes, there's some really significant safety and health issues in those particular areas.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't object to that comment, but, uh, appreciate your clarifying for us, chief, and I'd be happy to discuss it with you offline.
Thank you. Is that a segue into our next section, Options for Code Amendments Concerning Administrative Citation Enforcement?
Uh, yes, it is. And as you see, we've, we've got the administrative enforcement, or selected portion of the administrative enforcement in, uh, Code, uh, Chapter Two, uh, that's quoted for you, and, and we've done just a little bit of a tune-up, uh, as you see, mostly around, um, if the, if the, the fines and other costs associated with, uh, administrative citation and its enforcement aren't paid, then what happens? And we've added some language, uh, allowing that to be a lien on the property, uh, in letter E at the bottom of the page, and we've added language saying that if they're still owed to the city, the city, uh, can refuse to issue licenses or permits to that person that owes those, uh, those fines. So those are, those are two ways to get the person's attention. Very often, if a fine's unpaid and you're not feeling the pain of it in any way, then it remains unpaid. But to be able to put a lien on the property, to say, "That's fine, you're coming in with a new building permit, we're not gonna issue that building permit until that fine is brought current." Uh, I should point out that we, we added the, or suggested to add the thirty days of assessment is, was when collection and these remedies kick in. I think it's important to have a timeframe, otherwise you don't know when they're delinquent. So we, we added that. In letter C, there's no change there, but I do want to point out, that's a really important technique, two-dash-ninety-three-C, certifying the, um, uh, delinquent taxes and fees and charges, et cetera, to the county treasurer to collect in the same manner as property tax. That's a really effective and efficient, uh, mechanism that I've used throughout the state, uh, it's recognized in statute, and it means that if you, it's gonna show up on someone's taxes and they go on the delinquent list, and yes, that, you know, they can redeem, et cetera, but it means you get paid. And that's another way, again, of getting attention paid. So those are all things that we'd like to do to the administrative enforcement, um, section, and would be curious to see if there's questions or objections to kind of tightening up that process a little bit.
We'll begin with Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sort of on the, along the lines of the county treasurer and the, their ability to deal with the tax lien situation, could we, I don't know if this is too complicated, but a way for somebody else to pay that fine, and if that person comes back and eventually pays it, they pay that person because that person covered that cost, and they get the ten percent, uh, interest on that deal. I don't know if that's too complicated or-
Yeah, uh, you, you know, in the, in the straight sort of delinquent property tax world, that's sort of true. You know, I, you failed to pay your taxes, I do, I've got the property you can redeem. You do so with the full amount I paid, plus, you know, the expenses of my having done it. So I think what you're suggesting is can we apply that kind of locally? We, we could, but my take about that, I guess, is this, that then puts the city in the position of, of, of having to have the same, a similar mechanism-
Right.
-which is pretty record-keeping intense, and I also think that, that then you're in the middle of potentially arguments between the person who paid and the person on whose behalf that got paid, arguing about how, whether it was enough was paid or was, or, I'd like to be able to, to incentivize others, but the mechanism to do that, I think, might be, uh, complicated for the city's setup, and then you're responsible for making both of those parties happy, and I'm not sure I would go there.
Okay, and then, I guess my other concern here is I don't wanna see a situation where failure to pay a fine results in the foreclosure of the property or their loss of their real property because of that, and, uh, I understand that paying fines is, you're legally obligated to do so, and I understand that, but at the same time, if it's a senior with a fixed income and now they're, uh, having a lien on their house that could potentially be foreclosed in some way, shape, or form, I just wanna make sure that we're not, uh, end up taking someone's property over a administrative citation enforcement.
Yeah. Uh, well, um, you know, we have these as, all as tools, uh, and, and sometimes you'll just, you'll, you'll just refuse to issue permits, uh, other times you'll certify it to the county. What many codes do around that, not around the senior foreclosure issue, I understand the concern, is they make these, these options alternative to one another. And, uh, even without saying it, they probably are, but I'm fine with saying that they're, that, that it's usually the city manager, his or her designee, can take any one or more of the following enforcement tools as appropriate to the circumstances. Would be kind of as far as I'd be able to go, short of saying, "We're not gonna use foreclosure where the property owner is, uh, over sixty-five years of age," or something like that. And, and I don't know that you wanna be quite that specific.
No, I'm not, yeah, I wouldn't necessarily wanna be that specific, but my, my general concern is relative to, uh, a, a fine turns into a lien, and then that lien turns into something else that then allows either the city or the county to take that property. So I just wanna prevent that from happening.
Well, then, we can certainly say that, you know, we could certainly say that in no event shall, uh, and the, the perfection, or the perfected lien be taken by the city to foreclosure. I mean, you can, you can, ready for this? Foreclose foreclosure. It's as funny as I get. See, which isn't very. Uh, if there's, a proper, um, consensus might be to, uh, uh, support the changes that are made here with the additions, that they are alternative to one another, and that foreclosure of a property lien is, is not permitted. Just trying that on.
Mr. Pond? I would like to make a concern. Mr. Pond?
Well, you should, yeah, before you make that consensus, I mean, I, I have a little bit of an issue with the language, be- because I think it speaks to the intent of E. It's saying that the city shall have it as a security for the collection of such fees or lien, and I, I'm kind of listening to us and, and talking, hearing us talk about a lien as an, an kind of an encumbrance or an incentive, incentive for someone to be, become into compliance, much like the withholding of permits. I don't know why we need any additional security if we can have the treasurer of the county put it on the, put it on the property taxes. What, what additional security do we need? Is there some problem with this tax thing, this, this treasury thing? Because if there isn't, we certainly don't need any additional security. We just, we just charge you on your property taxes and we're done. So, like, I don't, so the language is a little bit, to me, is, it's, I'm not saying that I'm opposed to having a lien, I think it's pretty harsh, but I'm not saying I'm opposed to it, but it's not necessary for security. We're talking about it for compliance, an encumbrance of someone to be, come into compliance. There's no reason to have it for secu- finance- encumbrance of someone to be, come into compliance. There's no reason to have it for secu, financial security, because all we have to do is tell this county treasurer to give us the money. Am I reading something wrong?
Well, uh, when you ref, when you certify it to the treasurer, it does become a lien in the sense that it's on the property for collection in the same manner as taxes. So if the taxes are delinquent, then this is delinquent. And, and what I guess is being proposed to be added is sort of separate lien language. And a lot of codes have that. They'll have a section that talks about referral to the county treasurer, and then they'll have a separate lien section. The reason they have a separate lien section is so that you can actually, if you wish, file a lien, separate apart from sending it to the county treasurer under that statute. You can, you can file a notice of lien, just like a mortgage company would. If you don't pay, they will file a notice of lien, and that's this additional language.
Again, which may be a surplusage. We, probably doesn't come up much.
Well, and again, I, that's fine. Like, that's one of our tools, but it's not so much for security. It's just one of our tools. So I'm, I'm being particular about that one kind of inference in that paragraph.
Okay. Ms. Davis?
Um, I ju, I just, I, you know, I'm fine with, if that language, if legal feels appropriate with it. I, I just would, and, and I think that also hashed itself out as well as I would, um, not support something that referred to, like, senior citizens, because I think that at any time, anyone could struggle with money if you're a single mom, if you're a senior citizen. And I'm leaning more towards the senior citizen end, but I, I think everybody has a circumstance, so, um, and, and again, I'm, I support what's, what's recommended, but I just wouldn't want to add that.
So if I could just, just add real quickly, in the, the ten years that we've had this administrative citation process, uh, we've not had anything, uh, come to a foreclosure. It was my understanding that property tax liens aren't foreclosable, you know? County taxes, you know, are, are situations that are, but our lien is, is, is sort of secondary. It has to be paid. Uh, otherwise, it continues. We've only had one case where a party has, has refused over the course of a couple of years, uh, three years, not to pay that. And that case was finally resolved, and she did, it went to court, went all the way up to Court of Appeals, and she had to pay the, the property tax on it, and did, uh, when she sold her property.
Okay. So, Mr. Urban?
Move a consensus, uh, around this based on what, uh, Mr. Dahl had mentioned prior to George's comment, which was to list these as alternatives to one another, as well as, uh, limiting the ability to foreclose on any lien created out of an administrative citation.
Do we have consensus on that, around that? Looks like we do. And you're, are you clear with what that?
I am. Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, that just brings us to the last item, which is, we've got this section called disorderly house. There is a statute, uh, in the, in, uh, the, the state that enables and gives enabling authority to look over to cities and towns to, uh, prohibit the keeping of a disorderly house. And the reason this is in our code is, it was added, uh, I was requested to add it many years ago, to deal with the circumstance where, uh, you could write up the mattress in the front yard, but then there's the, the, the junk car, and then there's the, uh, the two-by-fours that are being stored on the side, and there's the weeds over there. And, uh, perhaps instead, you want to be able to just write up the property in a more general way. And that's why this section is available. It's sort of a, um, a catch-all, if you will. Uh, and, and, uh, there are some suggestions to kind of clarifying it. There's three notices, kind of a three-strikes, uh, aspect that is suggested. And we could certainly try to tune this up. I guess before we even went there, one question I guess I'd have for, for Phil, to put poor Phil on the spot yet again, is whether we, we have been writing, are we using this tool such that we need to tune it up or not? Uh, what's your view? Have you been writing ever these?
Occasionally. Occasionally, we write the disorderly house. Uh, we usually try to spec it out. I mean, if we've got a situation where we've got four or five different violations, we'll be real specific, and we'll give them the littering. We'll give them the outside storage. We'll give them the, uh, a dangerous container. And significantly, when they, when they approach compliance on that, they'll work at each and every area until we have full compliance on that. So to answer your question, seldom do we write totally for disorderly house unless it's, unless it's needed.
Okay.
And, uh, we haven't run across many, many cases that it's needed.
But it's not a, it's not a tool we should get rid of necessarily?
No, no, no. It's a good catch-all. We need it.
Good to have in the toolbox?
Yeah. It, it is in there for a reason, and, uh, it is applied when needed.
Would it be helpful or not to have this three notices business? Would that sort of impair its, its usefulness? Maybe this is if it isn't broke, don't fix it situation here, and I just wanted to explore that with you.
Yeah. I mean, I guess the seriousness also has to be taken into account of its tall grass and weeds, uh, the tall grass and weeds just in the front yard, is it overall in the entire property? Is it, is it one, uh, abandoned vehicle versus six or seven? Uh, obviously, there's violations going there. To the extent of what it takes to bring him back into compliance is also looked at as well. Uh, if, if we've got him into compliance and he comes back and he, he brings sixteen more cars, then that's an abuse of, of what we're trying to gain for compliance. So in that matter, if there's a blatant disobeying of, of compliance, we're going to look at disorderly house to say, "Hey, this kind of behavior's got to stop. It's got to end right now, and we're going to do a final wrap-up by, you know, using the disorderly house."
Okay. And so there's three notices question, which is what I was trying to get at. You were saying, does that help, not help?
It helps.
It helps?
It helps.
Okay.
And, Mr. Dahl, also, the intent behind this, putting this on the list, too, was to deal with some of those habitual properties where, um, they would have an issue, and we would clean it up, but then a month down the road, they would have another issue. Then they'd clean it up, and a month down the road, they'd have another issue. You know, to give us more teeth to deal with those habitual properties instead of just every month going out and writing them up and having them cleaned up. So I don't know if this language in here gives you that additional authority to deal with those types of properties?
That, that, and the chief adds on.
Well, I think, I certainly think having three notices of violation i- in one year is, should be, could be one factor. But I think there needs to be an oar in there, and that oar is, is for that release, uh, that property that's, that's really out of compliance, and, and has some really significant safety and health issues. And then that decision could be made whether to cite them via the administrative process or into criminal court.
Discussion on this from council? Mr. Matthews, then Mr. Urban?
Uh, yeah, I'd appreciate if you could go through the, the, the disorderly house procedure to its endpoint, where it does go before Judge Randall, or how do you get there, and then what happens in the court? And what, what are our, our options?
So, so we have two processes. We have the administrative process and the criminal process. The administrative process, uh, tends to be civil in nature. The, uh, the degree of evidence is a preponderance of the evidence. It's not the higher standard, the reasonable doubt standard. Uh, so citing via the administrative process gets it before an administrative judge quicker, administrative hearing officer, uh, quicker than citing through, uh, criminal court. So when, uh, in two thousand and five, when we just had the criminal, uh, court, the municipal court, uh, mechanism, uh, there were a number of cases that, code cases, that were a year and a half, two years being resolved. It wasn't the fault of the court. It, it's, it's the process that you have when you're dealing with, with a case in, in a municipal court or criminal court of law, right? Uh, they have a right to be representative, uh, to be represented. Uh, they have a, a right for an arraignment. They have a right to, uh, to make motions, to have charges dismissed. And those all tend to prolong a case. A judge being absent could prolong a case. Somebody declaring a conflict could prolong a, you know, a case. So we actually had three or four cases when I became the chief that, that were over a year, up to, up to two years in terms of getting resolved. And the cases that had already been citing, cited, there wasn't anything we could do about that case. So that's why we came up with this administrative model process, because, you know, we can cite cases into that. It's a different threshold of evidence, and we're able to pursue those. And, and quite frankly, get ninety-seven to ninety-eight percent of them resolved, uh, pretty quickly.
Yeah, that, that's where I'm a little confused, because, um, are there two different disorderly house citations? If there's one that's written out by...
No, there's not. No, there's not. Same citations. But one's written into an administrative, sort of a civil, uh...
That's what I'm asking. That's not, that, that does or doesn't go to court.
The other's the criminal option, right?
That does or doesn't go to court. I'm, I'm confused here when you start talking about... I mean, I, I guess what I'm saying is, if you have a, if you have a, if you have a fine for, uh, five panels out on the fence, and it's a fifty-dollar fine, you go somewhere to pay that. But on disorderly house, is that strictly... Is there a fine that's associated with that, or what is the fine, and how do we determine it?
So the fines that are associated administratively are based on our administrative citation process. So generally, unless somebody appeals that citation, they can receive three citations, uh, before it goes into abatement. So the first citation's one fifty, the second one's two fifty, the third's five hundred. So that's, you know, about a thousand dollars in, in, you know, in fines at, at the end of, if you go the administrative process. If you go the criminal process, then it's in the criminal court, it's in the municipal court. And so you have to play by the municipal courts, you know, rules of procedure. So there are procedures for running an administrative hearing. There are many more procedures in terms of running, you know, municipal court, in terms of, of hearing a case and what applies. At the end of the day, the, the judge could, uh, you know, order a fine, uh, you know, they could potentially jail somebody. Those are the options that, that they have in the, you know, in a, in a criminal, uh, sort of court, uh, versus just the fine and the potential of an abatement on the administrative side.
Uh, thank you, because I was under the impression that once you got to the disorderly house, um, elevation of, of finding and what have you, that it almost automatically went to the court?
No. Any, all of our violations, most of the violations are in chapter fifteen, you know, uh, you know, can be written into the adminis, the administrative model process.
Okay. How is, how does it get determined, then, which, which side that goes to? It sounds like we still have the administrative disorderly house, but there's also the...
It's the same, it's the same, it's the same citation. It's just where it's cited into, Larry. So how do they, how do we make that determination? The nature of the problem. You know, how significant is it? Uh, you know, what's, what's the, what's the, what's the danger to the public from a health, quality of life, safety perspective?
Thank you. Additional? Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, with respect to the item here that talks about three notices of violations within one year, um, is that adjudicated notices, just a notice? Or how do those have to be tied up in a bow, uh, for them to qualify within that year?
Well, the way that this is written is three notices. It's not adjudicated. Three notices.
So...
So an adjudication would, would occur in, in a, in a criminal kind of case.
Mm-hmm.
But in, in the civil case, we give, you know, a property owner two options, right? If, if they receive a citation, you pay your fine, you know, depending on, you know, if it's a first, second, or third, right? Or you appeal your case and it goes to administrative hearing officer. And that administrative hearing officer makes that final decision.
Well, I guess, well, one of my concerns here is relative to, not as, uh, more on the administrative side, dealing with sort of a double jeopardy situation where, uh, not necessarily double jeopardy, but in the, in a situation where, um, you've had two violations, and now you get a third, but because you've, it's like the whole three-strikes-and-you're-out law. So I'm trying to figure out if someone's had two notices previously, and they could, and they have a, is this disorderly house the third one?
They don't even have to have one notice.
Okay.
You know, the one notice could be enough to write them into the disorderly house. So, you know, it, it, you know, the severity of the particular case in question, uh, might justify writing it, uh, right into an administrative hearing. It might justify writing it right into a criminal court of law. That is at the discretion of the community services officer.
Okay. All right. I'm good.
And, and, and maybe just to add to that, just as another layer, you know, some of the frustration that, that I hear expressed by community members and, and council members sometimes is, is with the problem residents. So, you know, uh, you know, if, if, if we stack too many requirements in regards to this, you know, it, it ties our hands in terms of dealing with that.
Well, and I, I appreciate that. And that, it's somewhat, some of our, my concern here is that, um, on one side, we have to balance the, sort of the rights of the individual. On the other side, we have to deal with those that continue to be a problem. And I can think of several situations where, uh, it's sort of a snowball of various issues that have come up over time, and it's just sort of percolating different violations over time. But it, um, from the property owner's perspective, there, it looks like we're picking on them. But, uh, from a reality perspective, we're just trying to tell them to get their stuff together. And so I, I appreciate that need to have that teeth and to say, "You've caused this many problems, and, and because you've caused these problems in the past, that's going to strike against you in this current violation." So I just want to make sure we're finding a good balance, uh, between protecting the property, property owner's rights and protecting our ability to get stuff done, to get them, you know, on the straight and narrow. So...
Chief, I guess I have a, a question on this, on this sort of three, um, three violations in one year would violate this section, so it would violate the disorderly home ordinance. Would it be required that they had three violations in one year in order to, to trigger this sanction or this, uh, this citation?
Thanks, Mayor. And I, and I had, had mentioned that earlier. Uh, what, what I would not, uh, looking at the issues that I've seen that come across to my desk, like to see ju, you know, three notice of violations in one year as sort of the process to tee this up. Uh, I think it needs to be a, an oar. It could be three notices of violation in a year, might tee up the disorderly house. But it could be a situation where, you know, the, the health, safety, and welfare of, of residents living there, or the surrounding community, generate the need to take it directly to disorderly house. And that's sort of the way that we have it right now. You know, we can go out and do an assessment on a, on a, on a property and say, "This is a disorderly house. This is so bad, it needs to be written as, as a disorderly house," and make the decision, "Do we take it through the admin hearing process, or do we take it to, to the criminal process?" Or we get, and as we've seen in some cases that have been mentioned here, where we have that chronic property where, you know, we issue a citation, they clean it up. Two months later, we're back out there with similar complaints. We issue another citation. We clean it up. We're out there a third time. You know, that could be the other kind of scenario that would play out in terms of, of trying to deal with, with those problems, where you get compliance, and then they fall off the wagon. You get compliance, and they fall off the wagon.
And I guess, what I, I guess where I'm sort of going is, is it clear enough that it, it may, but, but not necessarily need to, or, and Mr. Dahl, maybe you...
That's what the chief is suggesting, that, that if you, if you agree with the recommendation, then we will need to wordsmith it
Okay.
into the disorderly house section to make it alternative, as he has described.
Mr. Matthews?
Just for the chief certification, because he knows how I feel about disorderly houses. I'm thoroughly against mandatory triggers for sentencing or fining or what have you. I still think that our, our jurisprudence is based on some kind of review by your peers or somebody. I, I just don't like mandatory... Somebody has to be able to say, "Yeah, as a human being, this doesn't fit this case, and we don't have to go out and, and find." I think when we do get to the disorderly conduct, and some person has made that decision, then, then the boom, they need to have the authority to drop the boom on them. But I wouldn't want to see things just happen arbitrarily, because the number three has been, been reached.
Thank you. Ms. Davis?
Um, I just have a couple comments. I'm guessing it's, um...
I'm guessing it's within one rolling year, not calendar year, so should we define that?
Sure.
And then my other question is, is I know we have disorderly house, and it sounds kind of cute, but is there a reason why it's not like disorderly property, so that if they're commercial properties, that we could do the same process?
Sure, yeah, you're, as home-rolled municipality, you can broaden beyond what the statute addresses, so sure. We can do that.
Then you would change the definition from, or other residential property, amend that to be-
Yeah, I think what we'd probably do is say the keeping of any residential, commercial, or industrial property in violation of et cetera, et cetera. Just broaden it that way.
Additional discussion on the disorderly house? Do you want to articulate a consensus question then, or?
Sure. The proper consensus would be to revise disorderly house to be broadly applicable to residential, commercial, or, and/or industrial properties. To add the recommendation to clarify, the three notices of violation would violate the section, but only as an alternative means of citation, such that the police department could simply determine that it was, such as to require immediate citation. And to clarify that the one year for those three notices is a rolling year, not a calendar year.
I'd like to make such consensus as stated by the city attorney.
And response by counsel is consensus, I believe you and us? Is there, let's see, that's the end of my, that's the end of my paper, except the scratch paper I used on the back of that. Does that conclude our discussion on item number five, or are there other things that we need to address?
Mr. Mayor, you had earlier mentioned doors and windows, and I told you it would be dealt with here, and I was wrong, and we haven't had a specific discussion about doors and windows being-
Well, and I guess, you know, my question is, you know, we've had sort of what looked like derelict properties out there, and they may not be fences, but they may have broken, broken windows and boarded up windows, and they're just, they're kind of properties that either aren't, you know, may or may not be inhabited, and my question is, do we have the appropriate tools in order to address those issues?
We may, in looking at disorderly property now, the sort of, the second sentence, sort of the last half, disorderly house, in this case, property shall also include keeping any such property in condition or manner, generates law enforcement calls disproportionate, or which negatively affect neighboring properties or residents, whether by continuous or excessive noise, or maintenance of the property in unsightly or unwholesome manner. Might be enough.
Does that, does that look like, is this strong enough language that, and fair enough, I guess, you know, both sides of the coin? Do we, does that sound appropriate?
Yes.
Okay? Good. Anything further from counsel on this issue?
I would just like to know what the word unwholesome means. Legally.
It's a standard that would be applied to a given set of facts, and so, for example, if I'm keeping, if I'm keeping some form of fruit, or I'm keeping, I'm keeping my trash, for example, on my property, it's within the week, it's within the week that I've got before I'm putting it out, but it smells, and it's attracting flies, and there are rats, or it's turned over, that's unwholesome. That's an example. I could go to Black's Law Dictionary and try to find a definition of unwholesome, I'm not sure it'd help us that much here. I think it's kind of fact-pattern driven.
Thank you. Okay, we will conclude item number five then. Thank you very much for bringing this in. Thank you, Mr. Schroder, for joining us today.
Thank you.
Good, thank you, Judge. We are, we are at a crossroads here. We are over an hour and fifteen minutes from when our scheduled break would be, so we've plowed through this. We have two more items, number three, extended stay lodging requirements, and number four, lodging facility licensing to address. Mr. Dahl tells me that these are not critical on our calendar and might be postponed. Either we will sort of wrap up our meeting now, or we're going to take a break and come back and do this, so I would ask for the pleasure of the counsel.
I would say postpone it.
Does that sound all right with everybody?
Making consensus to postpone these two items?
Why, well, we've got an hour to go, but I guess whatever everybody wants. I mean, I'm used to being on salary, so if I have to be here until midnight, I'm here.
Okay. What's the pleasure to-
Consensus to postpone these two items to a later date.
Okay, three, four.
That's a consensus. It's a majority.
Well, that's a, that's a majority, so we will buy a slim majority vote to postpone
number three and number four. And if that's the case, let's go right to staff reports. Mr. Goodall?
I don't have anything this evening, thank you.
Okay, then we should go around and, is, elected officials matters? Are there any elected officials matters? Ms. Hoppe?
Yeah, I just would like to say that the two items that we postponed to a later date, we have time in our calendar to do so. That's why I raised my hand for it. And also, I feel like both of these items are going to require a lot of conversation. I know that when we were putting the agenda together, the comment was, oh, this shouldn't be too bad, and I said, I don't know, I really feel like all three of these items are hot and going to require a lot of dialogue, and so I would like to actually apologize for loading these all up onto one meeting. I think that I probably could have done a better job with scheduling those in the first place, but I do think that we are going to need the time to be able to have the dialogue for extended stay lodging regulations and lodging facility licenses, maybe not so much, but definitely the extended stay lodging regulations, so that's my apology to you guys for a bad schedule.
Thank you. Mr. Urban?
Thank you, and likewise, it's not that these issues are not important, I believe they're very critical to our city, but in order to give them their due, I think it's important to postpone it to a later date. And on that, there were a couple items in that issue that I would like some more information on specifically. How many hotel rooms do we have in the city? I saw one thing in a report in 2005 that we had eleven hundred and forty-four, the assessor says six hundred and sixty-four, so-
We can, we've got that information and those numbers, and we can certainly provide that. I was going to cover some of that tonight with you.
Okay.
Ms. Hoppe?
Sorry, I forgot. One other thing, Ms. Dozeman brought up outdoor lab, and I just wanted to let everybody know that we, as soon as I find it. I had a student who was out, outdoor lab when they had to be brought home. She also, she, they got brought home, and then they were able to go, they were told that they were going to be going for a couple of nights, and then it turned into one day. However, I do want to say that she had an amazing time, an amazing time, and when I asked her, did you feel like your outdoor lab experience was ruined? She said, absolutely not. She had a really great time. So I thank all the staff and the, the staff in Everett, when they have special security issues, and unfortunately, they had to be evacuated once because of the gas station down the road and fumes, and they had to get evacuated to the high school, we had this thing with the outdoor lab, they are amazing, they've got their system down, I'm not even worried about my kiddo being evacuated, or, you know, having to be with the staff, the police department's there to help them, and the Jefferson County, like, security patrol are all there to help them. So I just want to say that, yes, the issue with the outdoor lab was out of everybody's control, however, the kids who did go did have a good time. But they sent an email on June 12th that said they are happy to announce that all Everett seventh graders for the 2019-2020 school year will have the opportunity to return to outdoor lab for a full year, and that they have secured two weeks in November, one for sixth grade, and then one for seventh grade. The exact dates have not been, have been, have not been nailed down yet at this point, but they did work really hard to make sure that they could get that experience in for those kids, so just so everybody knows.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
So just real quickly, there's a renewal Wheat Ridge meeting tomorrow, if anyone would like to attend. It's at six, here.
Thank you. Additional elected officials matters. Ms. Dozeman?
I was going to follow up on the outdoor lab, because a constituent forwarded the email that was sent to Everett families, but since Janice had already covered that, I do want to congratulate two of our Wheat Ridge City staff members that are going to be retiring. One of them is Janice Smothers, who is the liaison for the city council, and then the other member is Chief Dan Brennan. You're retiring at the end of this month, correct?
July nineteenth.
July, July nineteenth. So I just wanted to thank you both for your service and dedication to the community, and I wish you well.
Here, here. Additional public officials matters?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I had sent a memo to you and the council about the inquiry from Jefferson County about wanting, needing to use the council chambers for the election in 2020. They're planning that far ahead. There were some changes at the legislature requiring more of the voter service polling centers, VSPCs, where they come in and they have, you can register, they can create a ballot for you regardless of what part of the county you live in, all of those services are available. We have typically only had that on Election Day in the even-numbered years. There have been some changes, again, with the legislature, and the Jefferson County has to now have thirty-two of these facilities available for the major election in 2020. The other change is that they can't just be for one day, they have to be for two days. Now, there will be those facilities that are there, like, open the whole week before the election, but these thirty-two sites have to be for two days. And if you happen to notice, the folks that I copied in the, in the email, one of them was Joyce Mannwaring, because the Parks Department is in charge of the facilities, and I heard back from her that the county had already asked her about using the rec center. So she's going to deal with them on that end, but I, my sense is that the county's kind of desperate for facilities, and I said, you really want our facilities? She goes, yeah, we really do. So the thing about two days is that the equipment would have to be stored in here on Monday night, so Monday and Tuesday, which would, I guess, require you to cancel your study session that night, or relocate it, I don't know if that's possible, but, I mean, it's that, it's that far ahead, and it's, you all can make the decision.
Are these, are these voting machines that would be sort of, I mean, could we, would it take the whole room, or do you, I mean, we need a table for a dozen people and-
Well, they, they-
Security?
Huh?
Can we have the meeting next door, or?
Meet in, oh. Meet in the-
Court chambers?
Court chambers. Yeah, and I talked to Kirsten about if there, if there would be noise, a noise problem, since they have court, and all she said was that if we know that far ahead of time, we're talking like a year and a half, she said, I think we can work around that. So they may have some small thing in there on Tuesday, like, if they have to do, bring in prisoners and do video recordings or something, but they'll, they'll make their way around I don't, they will have to use the chambers, so during the day, so I don't think that we could put the voting business in there, have to be in here, and they're, they're not going to want to pack it all up and re-unpack it on Tuesday morning. It's, the boxes are out, the chairs are set up, the computers, the, it's, it's, I don't know, were any of you here last time when we had, during the day, when we had a voting?
My understanding was there was a cage in the back that they put all their stuff into and locked it. There was a cage right here, a metal cage that they put all their stuff in, and they locked it up.
Yeah, but once they unpack it, I don't think they're going to want to repack it on Monday night and then unpack it again on Tuesday.
Is this, is this something that we might have a, we've got enough time to be able to find some more, some more information?
I might just have it, why, I mean, could we just tell the county, yes, you can have this, and then as it gets closer to November of 2020, we figure out where we're going to have our meeting? I mean, we can, we can give them our room for the night, and then we can figure out where, if we're going to cancel our meeting, or if we're going to have it somewhere else another time.
Television.
Yeah. I think we just cancel it, problem solved. Adjourned.
I'm asking for consensus to cancel the meeting for the Monday before the-
We can't cancel a meeting that hasn't been scheduled.
Okay, okay, well, why don't we, why don't we give a, it sounds like that we could make accommodations to, for the county to have their, it looks like we can make that accommodation, so we'll, so pass that word on and we'll-
That-
That, they would be, they would be able to use the council chambers.
Monday and Tuesday?
Monday and Tuesday.
It's not uncommon for council to cancel their meeting the night before an election, so-
We can, we can, we can figure that out.
Okay.
Is that good?
I will pass that on, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Is there any other business? Then we will stand adjourned. Thank you so much.